Okay, all right. It looks like it's seven o'clock, so is this working? That working, guys? For some reason, it's not sounding like.
We can hear it externally, Sarah, just fine.
We need to turn you up.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Jeremy?
This is Jeremy. I could hear both Mary and Sarah.
And you're very soft.
I can hear you.
How's that? Better?
It's better.
All right, thank you.
You could hear both of us?
I just tested this. We're at eighty percent.
But we need to go up volume more.
All right.
Tested everything, and they're all up to ninety. Eighty-five and ninety.
Is there a master volume?
That, that means though. So.
One moment, our microphones have dropped out here at Town Hall.
We're gonna get everybody to come in person because the.
Jeremy, if you can hear us, can you say something, please?
Hi, hi, hi. Testing one, two, three. You sound great.
Yeah, unfortunately, the speakers in here just died, so we can barely hear you. We're not sure what just happened because they worked on a test just moments ago, so. One moment.
Okay.
After, right?
You're not killing the zoom, right?
That sounds like. Can you guys hear that? Is it better?
Craig, I hear you on a little bit of a delay and a little bit of an echo.
Yeah. We're gonna reboot the system, so. Just one moment while we do that.
No?
Oh, my understanding is just the speakers that aren't working.
Right, but the echo was because somebody had it.
Okay, we have rebooted, but the mics are still very low. I'm not sure if you can hear us out there.
You sound great.
I think we just have to proceed.
A born optimist.
Well, no, I mean, it's kind of something's coming out of the speaker.
It's just not. It's just the volume. That's the only problem. It's so that the problem is only us hearing the volume coming out of the speaker. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I just want to welcome everybody that's here with us today in person. Thanks so much for coming out on this rainy night as well as on Zoom. Jeff, Mayor Alf is on vacation with his family for ski week this week, so I am filling in for him. So I think we need to start with roll call.
Right, and Sarah, can we just mention there's six people in the audience at the, at the Town Hall or at the old schoolhouse, I guess.
And how many people are on line?
They are fifteen attendees and nine parents.
We'll do roll call. Councilmember Haskell.
Here.
Councilmember Hufte.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Here. The first agenda item is really just report out a closed session, and there was no closed session, so there's no report. Item on the agenda is oral communications, and I'll just read the procedure here. That person's wishing to address the town council on any subject may do so now. Please note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or action on, on items not on the agenda, and that speakers are limited to three minutes. With that. Melissa, will you take the, I think we have one hand raised.
Yes, we also have a speaker card. The first person to speak on Zoom is Rita. One moment.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my question. My question is about the audit and year-end financials that have been delayed. I, I noticed in the warrant list and the budget that will be talked about later, I won't go into that, but there are bills that are being paid, but no budgets or codes associated with those payments. And also in the, the mid-year budget review, and I'll talk about those things later, but I, I really hope that those items, the first item gets pulled from the consent agenda to talk about. And, you know, thank you for moving forward with these issues and, and actually looking at the budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Did we have a hand up here in the schoolhouse? No? I think we have one more. Oh.
I do wanna, Vic? Did you want to speak now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The first speaker is Dave.
Good evening. My name is Dave Pittwell, and I live at 220 Golden Hills Drive. On December thirtieth, just the night before New Year's Eve, my house was broken into, and I believe it was by two individuals. At the time, my wife and I were traveling. We were out of town in Park City, Utah. And these individuals walked around the house. I got a video of them on my Ring doorbell. But they entered the house through a glass door off of our patio into our master bedroom. They broke that door and basically crawled through that. They didn't open the door. They didn't set off the, the security alarm. They went into the house, started walking around, and fairly quickly, I think, set off the motion detector, which did activate the security alarm. So with that going off, I think they moved relatively quickly. They scavenged around a few bedrooms, opening cabinets and drawers and so forth, but they spent most of their time in my wife's closet. Any drawer that was locked, they just ripped the front of it off. Basically, they were looking for money, jewelry, and I'm told by others, they also are looking for weapons, guns. They didn't spend much time in the house. Maybe, I'm gonna guess, ten minutes. They left car keys and things just laying there. And, and then departed before the sheriffs showed up. They, later that evening, they broke into a house in Burlingame, did the same thing, and then after that, they broke into a home in San Carlos. So a busy night for them. Overall, they walked away with basically forty thousand dollars worth of jewelry, a little bit of money. The door that they smashed to get in is gonna cost ten thousand dollars to replace. And to make matters worse, it's gonna be six months before that door is manufactured and ready to be installed. So. It was a short period of time and a lot of damage basically done. The security alarm was activated at eight fifty-five PM. The San Mateo Sheriff's deputies showed up at our front door at nine twenty-nine. So over a half hour after the alarm was sounded, did the sheriffs show up. The following week, I spent every day basically trying to reach somebody at the San Mateo Sheriff's Department to have a discussion about the intrusion, intrusion into our home and was basically unsuccessful. Never did speak to anybody, could find anybody who knew anything about our incident. The following week, I spoke to Captain Myers, who introduced me to a detective who was assigned our case. And every seven days, then I had a brief conversation with this detective, but basically nothing materialized. And I don't really expect anything now that we're approaching two months from when the intrusion took place. I bring this matter to your attention this evening, not to find fault with anybody that was involved, certainly not with the San Mateo Sheriff's Office, but to point out that Portola Valley is having a growing number of home robberies. And our community is an ideal location for this type of crime.
Can I just interject briefly? I apologize for cutting you off. I just want to make sure you're aware of the three-minute time limit. If you could just be sensitive. Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Our, our community is a prime location for break-ins such as this. Expensive properties, large plots of land, lots of oak trees, separating homes. Basically, we're very isolated. The, the San Mateo Sheriff's Office is overworked, understaffed, but they are our partners. I'm not sure that I feel that they are the best potential partner, but if they are, then perhaps there's more that we can do as a community to entice them to be more responsive to our crime needs. That's all I'll say tonight. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing that.
The next speaker is Vic.
Speaking to you now as the next-door neighbor to Mr. Pittwell. I'm not speaking to you as I will be shortly on behalf of EPC. I have a report to do. I was the next-door neighbor, and I was called on New Year's week, weekend to try to locate the Pittwells, and the alarm was going off. By yet another neighbor noticed the alarm was going off, and there was no response. The rain was coming down. It was a mess, and it took all that time, the Seminole Police, to get there. I still don't know why it took so long, but clearly with the alarm going off that way, it raises questions in terms of what we're hap, what's happening in this community. I too am not interested in finding fault, particularly with anybody at this point. I'm sure the Seminole Police would like to have been there a lot faster, and of course, some use of all the money we spent for these viewers that we have around town to locate. There was a little bit of a description of what the vehicle looked like that they left in. My point is, is we are at risk. We are sitting ducks in this community, and I know that you have, all of you, an enormous agenda of very heavy items, but this is not the first. Shortly after, we had Golden Oaks was hit again this year, and I think it was a year, a year and a half, Golden Oaks was hit, and it was actually an assault and battery with a gun at that time. Atherton has been hit repeatedly. Atherton has been hit repeatedly over the last year. I think they said three instances just in the new year. So I speak in support of Dave's comments to you and ask that somewhere you get on your agenda dealing with this issue. We are indeed, as they say, sitting ducks. I spoke to Jeremy about this. He has scheduled, I think in March, we're hopeful maybe move up as early as possible to bring the San Mateo Sheriff in to talk with us about what we can do. This was not an unarmed house, so even that is not going to protect us. It is clearly a criminal group that knows what they're doing, that is pushing us into this problem area. And I agree with Dave that we are known as a dark community that is very vulnerable. I'll be leaving. Many of you will be leaving your homes to do things over the coming months. And the question is, do I have to get a home sitter? What kind of protection do I get for the house while we're gone? How do we get our neighbors? Fortunately, in this case, our neighbor across the street took action, heard the alarm, called me. I got ahold of Dave and we got somebody to respond as the rain was coming in through that broken door and these thieves took off to hit yet another house. So I urge all of you, together with the many other items that you have on your agenda, to find some place to address this as a town. We are known as a vulnerable town. It is not just happenstance that we've been hit so much. I'm told by Jeremy that other towns have had even more break-ins than we, but it's a little solace for those that are still trying to consider what we do when we leave our homes when they're clearly being surveilled. And we need to have some better protection. Dave and I have come up with several solutions to propose. And whatever you put together by way of a response, we'll be happy to speak with those folks. And we spoke with Jeremy about some of those suggestions of what we can do. But I think we have to take a real good look. And part of it, I'll close with this. I know the town is also in negotiations with the San Mateo Sheriff. But what are reasonable expectations given their diffuse responsibility in this large county? And that will be helpful, but we can't have 40 minutes between an alarm going off and the rest. So I urge your careful consideration in my capacity to speak to you as a resident of Golden Hills, not in any other capacity that I was speaking to you today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Vic.
Just one quick question. This was on New Year's Eve?
This was on the Friday of New Year's Eve weekend. I think it was the day before. I think it was Sunday and this was that Friday night. So it's clearly the holiday time that we know, many of these people know they can hit a house pretty hard. Thank you.
I think Jeremy has his hand raised. Jeremy, did you want, have some feedback on this topic?
There we go. Hello. Sorry, I did not hit unmute. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Good enough.
Okay, great. Thank you. I did want to make one brief comment. Vic had mentioned that I'm working with the sheriff's office right now for a community event. We are trying to schedule that and I hope to have something to announce a little later this week. I'd hope to announce something earlier this week, but the date did not work. So more to come. I do think unfortunately, it's going to be towards the end of March, just given some of the other needs of the sheriff's office and the particular people we want there, but wanted to let folks know that it's in the planning stages. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kristi Corley.
Yes, thank you for your volunteerism and your care for our community. Based on what was just said, I am also a resident of Golden Oak. And I am aware that Los Altos Hills has 38 flock license plate readers. I am aware that Woodside has 20 flock license plate readers. They will probably be getting more. We have three. So I'm proposing that we go beyond our three license plate readers and we secure our hotspot streets. And I think we all know what they are and we need help from the sheriff. Often, the sheriff department or police department will help look at past reports and help set the locations of the flock readers. The flock system gives two 60, well, 60 days free. And then we can reassess and see if we like the system or not. We have an older system called variance or something. Maybe Jeremy could clarify. That's out of memory. But I am proposing that we look at the flock system, we look at the hotspots and we get them covered. Item number two, I would, I'm requesting a legislative bill update from our lobbyist. The last day to give bills to the legislator was, I think, the 17th of February. So we look forward to also benefiting from the report from our paid lobbyists. But I also have another concern. I want to thank you for your future attention to the residents, words that are verbal and written. I would like to talk about respect and change. Number one, respect for the residents who take time to read your agenda and make comments. Come to the town council meetings. Number two, change of the public comment responses at town council meetings, not silence. Number three, public comment minutes. So in the first one, public comment in regards to respect and change, what's happening now? Residents say a public comment with a question. Often, there is not an answer. And maybe another resident has the same question and would like to hear the answer. But often, the answer is, can we take this offline? And then offline, it's a private conversation at which the public does not get the benefit of hearing the answer. We are in a public meeting and we'd like to hear the public answer to our questions. Number two regarding minutes, respect for change. Our names are written in the minutes, but not what we said. We did say a comment, but just our name is written. Are our comments reflected in the minutes? No. We can do better. Yes, we can. Residents' words should be reflected in the minutes. I am requesting that, and I thank Judith Haskell for her comments, for the need of thorough minutes versus, let's see, action minutes. I would like this new council with new change to consider a discussion on action minutes versus comprehensive minutes.
Kristi.
Yes, see that I meant.
You don't mind wrapping up?
Yeah. Complete minutes are important for accuracy of the history of this town. We need thorough minutes, not abbreviated. The current council has the power to make appropriate changes for the people of this town. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi.
The next speaker is David Cardinal.
Great. Just one quick comment. I'm all for better response times, which we would have to pay for. And we get, we pay for, and if we want 10-minute response times, we probably have to pay a lot more. But that's, that's a taxpayer decision. On the terms of the historical trends, I think it's really easy to generalize from personal experience. And based on what I've looked at over the last 12 to 15 years, we've averaged, according to the sheriff's records, about a burglary a month roughly. Or, and God forbid robberies, which, you know, we've had a couple of those recently. Over that time, we're much more aware of them now because we have Nextdoor, we have PV Forum, we have cameras. People are much more alert to it. But statistically, we may or may not be a sitting duck. We have a neighborhood watch program we didn't used to have. Neighbors have to help neighbors. But I don't think there's any evidence that suddenly we're a place where, you know, huge gangs are suddenly deciding to come up here en masse and wreak havoc. I just want to make sure we keep that in perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I think we have a couple from in the council chambers.
John Silver.
Thank you. I was hoping not to speak in oral communications, but I wanted to just follow up on what Kristi. I do think our public process would be improved. And I agree with Kristi, unless you have questions that come up during hearings or answered at the time if possible. Because sometimes the person that asked the question is going to be there at the end of the meeting when staff goes through all the questions. And also, if an accurate answer is given to a question, it may shorten the public process. I actually think it could be quicker. Now, back in the dark ages, when I served, in prehistory, when I served in the town council, we didn't have time limits. I was here at 2:00 AM sometimes, but, you know, but still, we were able, we were able to be much looser there. It's getting harder and harder today. So I understand the necessity of time limits, but I think it actually, I think answering questions when they're asked, when they can be, would be excellent. And if it's something that has to be looked into and gotten back, that should be said right then. And, you know, friends, just one quick example. And I really like the clock. It helps me a lot. Anyway, I remember some meeting on housing where someone said, well, why can't we annex land at Stanford across the creek from Ford Field and put housing there? Well, that question probably was answered much later. I don't know if the guy ever got the answer. Well, it's in another county. It would take a change in county law or state law. And, you know, it'd be a real rigmarole. And it would have been really good. Just, it wouldn't have taken long to say that. It would have made everything go better. Also, as far as minutes go, in my day, again, in prehistory, the council had, and Planning Commission, because they had staff, professional staff, had fairly comprehensive minutes, but not, not verbatim, certainly not a transcript. Town committees would have action minutes. The staff were the committee members. Now, when I, at one point though, we started, the councils, when I think, when I was still in office, we started to make audio recordings of the meetings and they would go to, it was a wonderful woman, who, my name, I'm forgetting, lived in Redwood City. She would do minutes that were incredibly accurate. And I was just stunned reading them, how they would capture, be condensed, but they would capture the, pretty accurately what was actually said. There aren't such people doing that. We could record meetings and have that be the official legal record, which I think we are recording them for Zoom now, and then have artificial intelligence do what would inevitably be written minutes, would have a lot of mistakes, but would not be a legal record. And my God, can you imagine how long it would take to correct an artificial intelligence transcript of a county town council meeting? It'd be longer than going, than having attended the meeting the first time. So I think that would, I think there's a way to square the circle here. Anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. All right, with that, I think we will close oral communications and move on to agenda item four, which is a study session with Supervisor Ray Mueller, who is with us today in the schoolhouse. Thank you so much for being here.
Sarah, do you mind if I say just a few words?
Sounds like Jeremy has a couple of words he wants to say. Jeremy, go ahead.
Just to, by way of introduction, Supervisor Ray Mueller was recently elected to the Board of Supervisors, succeeding then Supervisor Don Horsley, representing District Three. I'm sure he'll speak more about his diverse district as he talks today. We invited Ray to come to introduce himself to the council and the community in his new role. We also asked Ray to say a few words about his major issues that he's been working on in all of, what is it, about seven weeks, Ray? Six weeks? And answer any questions or hear from the council on issues that are of concern to you. And as with all of our partnerships in the community, this is an ongoing discussion and dialogue. And we look forward to working with you, Ray, and your team moving forward. So Ray, all yours.
Thank you, Jeremy. So it's a pleasure to meet some of you for the first time. And I want to just let you know how much I respect what you're doing. It's, to be a city council person, this can be tough. The hours are grueling. You're interacting with the public and you're doing your very best and it's not always understood. I always said, people don't come to city council meetings to tell you you're doing a great job. Not typically what happens.
Look at all these people. They're clearly here to go.
And to the public, thank you for coming out tonight. It's really important. It's great to have that dialogue taking place and some of the things you talked about, I'd like to touch on. So I am a new supervisor. I spent 10 years on a dais, like all you're doing here. And so coming to that, coming from that perspective, one of my primary jobs I see is to try to help you, try to help you problem solve with the resources that we have available to the county to go ahead and address the issues that you're hearing from your constituents and see how we can go ahead and bring those resources to bear to help you do that. A little bit about what my tenure has been like in the first seven weeks. It's been absolutely crazy. So I was prepared to be sworn in on January 3rd and on December 30th, got a call from county council saying there was a major storm coming in. We're going to swear you in now. I was at Disneyland with my family and spent the next, really spent the next three weeks in that terrible storm, trying to help constituents and trying to help, and I got to say, county, the county department of public works. People at the county worked really hard. They're amazing. Made me look good in a lot of circumstances, but we are still unpacking that. There are a lot of people who have been affected, as I'm sure you're aware, who just need, who still need help. We spent, one of the things that was crazy that happened in the storm was that people, connectivity went down for a lot of people. And what that meant was a lot of those reports coming in in terms of damage weren't timely and aggregated. So we spent a lot of time after connectivity came back, just trying to get that aggregated so that we could get it to FEMA so that could qualify for some of that aid, which we do qualify now, both SBA and individually. So if people are dealing with that, please do have them reach out to me or the county so we can go and try to get them that assistance. And then shortly after, I'd like to say the first day that I was, I was actually in San Carlos enjoying lunch with someone for the first day. And I thought, well, I'm actually, might be able to start directing work instead of respond to it. And then the shootings happened and happened. We really spent, we've spent really after that uncovering all of the different layers there beyond just the shooting to what happened with the school district, the school districts out there, to what happened with, what really sort of uncovered in terms of farmworker housing. We talked about during the campaign and how we're addressing that now and an ongoing basis enforcement and really trying to build affordable and farmer for housing. That does affect Portola Valley. We announced a task force that's looking at farmworker housing throughout the county, not just on the coast. So farms and ranches here in Portola Valley, that task force will probably be reaching out to, to ask and see if there's any farmworker housing there. We discovered there's a lot of unpermitted farmer for housing. So we're trying to wrap our arms around that and then we're working, it's not a punitive process. We're trying to work with our farmers and ranchers to go ahead and get that housing permitted and try to help them bring it up. As you know, it can be very difficult to put in an ADU. It's very difficult to put in farmer for housing. So there's a lot of people who've had the best intentions and but couldn't get through the regulations or didn't have the resources or even bought a property with housing existing. And in some cases, I have never really looked closely at that housing. So this is going to be a long process. It's going to be a multi-year process, but we're going to get through it and we're going to be a lot stronger coming out of it as a community. In terms of other things that we'll be looking at here in Portola Valley, one of the things that's exciting is that there was legislation passed last year to help people get back their fire insurance. So one of the things that we're doing at county right now is looking at how we roll out that. It requires that a city adopts specific home hardening in their codes and that people have done that home hardening. It requires a certain amount of mitigations, having gone around that, around that home and a safe space around that home. But if all of those different requirements are satisfied, a person can get their fire insurance back. Just something really exciting in that we're going to be working with cities to try to go ahead and bring to people because a lot of folks have had it canceled. We're going to be, another thing, we actually are looking at public safety issues. So, and that's one of the things, when you do have that, I'd like to be a part of what we're talking about there with the sheriff. To think, to look at what we can do beyond license plate readers. There's also, the community is accepting the cameras candidly. So a lot of people don't realize it, but a traffic camera actually can be rolled back. And when you put them in and you announce that, criminals pay attention. And I've seen that happen in other areas. And so there are different strategies that I'd love my office to be a part of and the county to be a part of. And I'd love to hear from you all of what else you'd like to focus on with my office this year. But we very, very much. Uh, but we very, very much would like to work with you and work with the city to go ahead and address issues. And there's all sorts of other things we touch on from parks, public health, you name it, uh, to protecting the environment. Sarah, I see you might have a question. No? So if, I'm happy to hear from you. It's supposed to be a study session. I wasn't sure, when I saw it on the agenda as a session, I wasn't exactly sure what topics you'd be interested. I know a lot, a lot of different jurisdictions are dealing with housing issues and transportation. So.
Well, you, you're, I, I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The question that you, you perked my interest in the question of insurability and it brought up the, uh, the housing element, uh, and the question of whether the houses we're going to be putting in are going to be able to be insurable and, and whether that's being taken into account and, uh, and how that, how that's going to play out. So, in other words, you're going to have a hard time getting people to build things if they can't get it insured.
Well, so my understanding of the new state laws is that if you meet all the basic requirements, the insurance company cannot say no. And so what's the response to that? I, it's, uh, the response to that is, is, that's just starting to get rolled out this year and go into effect. We'll see how, how that responds. But my understanding is that if your city has adopted the home hardening, if people have done that home hardening, if they have that amount of clearance space, the, and if the mitigations have been done, the insurance company must insure you.
What about the affordability?
I'm confused by that. I don't think it would affect fire, but.
Well, uh, I can get insurance, but if it's prohibitive, we're still not going to get our, the ability to create new housing as demanded by the state is not going to be practical. So is there, are you aware of the law uh, addressing affordability of that insurance? Yes, they insure you, but if I can't afford it.
So I'm, usually there's a good faith requirement and that when someone says that they're being forced to give into you something, you could actually buy it.
Good.
Yeah. Any other questions I could ask?
Other council members, questions?
Well, there's, you know, as, as you know, I mean, there's all sorts of things that are revolving around the housing itself. Um, and, and one thing I'm curious is what is the county doing probably to lobby Sacramento to sort of make the housing requirements, I think, a little more pallid? Pallid would maybe be the wrong word, but a, a little more implementable, because it feels like we're kind of in this one size fits all mode right now. Um, and, you know, we're really struggling between earthquake safety and wildfire safety. And, and at least in Portola Valley, we've got, you know, two open space preserves, but we don't have like lots of open corp yards and stuff like that that you can just say, oh yeah, sure that we can go build these things. So I'm wondering if the county is looking at these issues, you know, countywide to sort of, in a sense, collect all the different issues that are coming up and then help move that stuff forward to the state.
You know, so it's, I, um, what I would say to you is that the, what I've seen at the county during my seven weeks there is that we actually, the county actually, uh, while we do interact with our state legislatures, the real way for a city to implement direction on housing elements is through your A-bag process. And so getting involved in A-bag, which really isn't, creates those, uh, those allocations that come down to each city is really a way that you get involved in that housing process at the state and then believe, and then gain involved in your councils of cities, which appoints members to bodies, which, which get involved in that. As a county supervisor, you're not going to see me come into your city and say, I, you have, and I don't even have that statutory authority to do that, to say, do X, Y, and Z. But what I can do is I can come into your city when, if Jeremy or your council says, hey, we have a project we want to do, but there's a hurdle that we think only the county can help us with. Then I can get involved to try to help with that. But in terms of the allocations process that comes down, that's something we don't touch. And we don't, we, statutorily, we don't touch your zoning. So there's, I, you know, there have been instances, for instance, right now, there's a project in Pacifica that touches their, their hillside ordinance that they need that, to do that project, need a county easement. And I've said, I'm, would never support that county easement because I respect their hillside ordinance. Um, but there's also ways that I can help a jurisdiction, uh, to go ahead and implement portable housing where it makes sense. And so it's just, it's just, uh, I'd say what we try to do is we really try to problem solve. But if you're really trying to affect state, the state legislative process, uh, you, that's really something done through the collective of cities doing that and then through the appointments to those city regional bodies.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, sure. It does. That, that's actually very helpful. Um, I wasn't thinking so much the allocations. I was thinking more that if the county could summarize the set of issues across the jurisdiction so that P, that the legislature on a county by county basis had a better idea of what the issues are, you know, what was working, what's not working, so that instead of this kind of one size fits all, we start thinking about crafting better laws going forward that end up getting implemented and, and achieving the goals. Because I mean, you know, I think a lot of these goals are good goals, you know, kind of at the heart of them, there's a good goal there, but then it becomes this one size fits all, which then basically A gets a lot of resistance, but also doesn't seem very applicable. Like it seems in some ways, we're not really effectively addressing that underlying goal. And so I think that was more, I, what I was asking is can the county actually help roll up some of this stuff so that we have a better view at a, at a larger scale than just individual cities going to their state legislator and saying, oh, well, here's our problem. And you know what I mean? That, that doesn't feel like necessarily the right.
So we do, so, and I should say, we do do that in, in the sense that, so for instance, I've been appointed as a county supervisor to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to, which touches on legislation of whether or not, right, on March, in March, they're going to be saying whether or not people can continue to use natural gas or natural gas appliances can be sold for furnaces and, uh, water heaters. Um, we, there's a number of different regional organizations that county supervisors get appointed to that touch on that. But there's always, but even in that circumstance, there also is a city's representative that's pointed to. But I do, I can tell you that I often have, and I, before I was elected and now, I'm talking to our state legislators constantly about the difference between the urban environment, the semi-rural environment and the rural environment and how these rules coming down are not one size fits all in any respect. And I'm actually trying to do that, the airboard right now, as they look at this rule and try to say, you know, we had this terrible thing happen in these storms where we had, uh, a power line cut in, uh, in La Honda. It knocked out Verizon Wireless to the coast, so people couldn't call 911. And to try to explain just how different the infrastructure is in the urban environment versus the suburban environment, something we're spending a lot of time talking about with our state legislators, but also talking with our utilities about. So. So the answer, the, the short answer is yes, we can do that. We are doing that. But what I would say to you is as much as we are doing that, I really do feel that having that conversation that this council can have with that state legislature really imparts the message, because I, you are the council for Portola Valley. So if we bring in Senator Becker, say, we have some stories to tell you about what our experience was like or what this, how this legislation impacts them. That does impact the supervisor, I mean, or a state legislature. They do remember that.
Great, thank you.
What, what way does you, what ways in particular do you think the county can help us with the housing?
So it, it really depends upon the problem you identify. So we can add that week, so I can, so it's an issue that touches on transportation. If it touches on, if you think that the housing coming in has, um, if the housing coming in, uh, well, it really depends upon the location too. So you're going to have to, so, so much about planning really is location dependent and what the impacts are in that location. And then whether or not, uh, the county has any resources that can go ahead and help alleviate that impact for one that you're most worried about. So I, an example that I would give is, for instance, in Menlo Park, there was a site identified for housing. And the question was whether or not the county could help, uh, bring resources to pay for the opening of a second road access. Right? I mean, at the end of the day, what the county has is we have money. Right? So the count, if there's, if the city is, has an issue with resources in order to do something, can the county help with that? And it's something that we do do, can do, uh, in a city. But it really is, and especially for, for, and so like every city has affordable housing issues, we're trying to help you achieve those goals. So, and that's, and I know as, I know the, the pain of that as a city council member, because those allocations come down. You have to try to figure out how to meet it and you want to meet it, because you have people, you mean, you have people living in this community, serving this community who need it. And, but the question is, how do you, how do you make it work? And do you have the resources to make it work? And so we can try to help alleviate those pain points. And I wanted to problem solve that with you. So, and there's other issues.
Things like security, sewer, uh, electricity, all that kind of.
It really depends upon what the problem is. What I would say if, that is, if you have an affordable housing development, or if you have any housing development that you're concerned about, that you have a pain point, that the city's having difficulty addressing, then the idea would be to invite myself or someone or the, like Department of Public Works to sit down to a meeting, uh, with the city manager's office and staff and say, hey, is there something that we can do collectively to try to help get this across the finish line? And that's going to be even more important now. I'm sure you guys are very aware of the builder's remedy and what that looks like in an area. But the builder's remedies hanging over a lot of jurisdictions' heads, and it's not just getting your housing element in, but it's also getting that housing accomplished within a specific amount of time. So, and that's, I think, where the, where the challenge will come in interacting with us to problem solve with you is even after you've gotten your housing element done, you have to get housing built within a certain amount of time or those penalties will kick in. So what I would say to you is once you have it done and those projects come forward, if you have pain points, reach out to us and we can try to help. So, and we will, we'll work with you and the community. And there's all sorts of things too that money can be brought to. I remember I was Supervisor Schmidian's, uh, chief of staff when the green bike lanes were opened up down here, that he had brought money to with the state senator. And so I remember very specifically that happening here in Portola Valley and how the money had come outside of Portola Valley to help get that done. So anything that we, so when you think about projects, if you're having any issue with that, where we just want to be helpful. It's a beautiful community and we want to help people that way.
Judith, do you have anything? Yeah, um, in terms of fire safety, um, what is happening at the county level that we should be aware of, be, you know, as a potential resource or initiative that we should be tracking?
So one of the things we're doing right now at the county level, when I came in, there's, uh, we have a, we, so the county has put millions of dollars into fire safety. And there's also other jurisdictions that are doing the same. And so one of the things I'm really working on right now is getting a, uh, GIS in graphic information system put in place so that all the projects can be listed on there so that a member of the public or another agency can go and look at and say, these are all the areas where these projects are happening in terms of fire mitigation for two reasons. One, it's going to help inform us whether or not, uh, it's going to help inform us where there's great work being done. But more importantly, it's going to inform us where work is not being done. And I think that's really important, especially when you look at the fact that you have communities like Woodside and Portola Valley that, uh, so my, I'll be fair candidly, I'm like the mayor for an incorporated county, right? I'm spending a lot of time in an incorporated county, because there's no, there's no one else to do that. Obviously, the county does a lot more work in, in other areas outside of what the city does. And so for us to be able to look at what the city's been able to achieve with respect to fire mitigation and then look at what the county's doing, I want to make sure that we're not forgetting an area for Tola Valley that needs that, needs that work. Right? So we get that all on the map and we can take a look at that. And that's also going to help us when we roll out the fire insurance, because if I have an area that they're pushing back on, I can say, no, look at all the mitigation we're taking in this area. Like, we've met the requirements. Let's go. Uh, but I think it'll be very helpful. So there's just, there's work like that, that's, that's happening. And we have mitigation work taking place. You have a wonderful fire district, by the way, really impressive. And actually, one of the leaders, uh, one of the leaders in FireSafe, which is doing incredible work with the county, actually comes out of the side of Fire Protection District.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned when you first, your first seven weeks, a lot of it has been so much in react mode. Um, what are the things that you're kind of looking forward to working on proactively?
So one of the things I talked about when I was, uh, running, uh, for office was creating a coastal, at first, it's going to be coast side, but it's coast side resilient infrastructure strategic plan. So basically, one of the things that has happened throughout, throughout the, the county, but, but very much on the coast side is we have so many different districts that overlap. And what happens with, with that is that when there are infrastructure, infrastructure projects, everyone has their own infrastructure project. But do we really know which one goes first and moves the needle on resiliency? So getting, doing strategic planning where you get all of those projects into one matrix and from all of the different districts is going to allow us the opportunity to go ahead and go to our state legislatures and federal legislature and say, these are the ones that need to go first and get everybody on that same page. That's something that we haven't happened. And what you guys will discover is at the end of a legislative process, usually what happens every year is that there is some money left over in surplus shares. And the legislators in good faith call all, call all the different cities and say, give me a project. Well, in the first couple of years I was on council, I thought that was really great. And by the time I was done with my tenure on council, I hated it. Because it felt like, uh, there really should have been, we really needed a strategic approach to how we were spending that surplus money. And so we're, I'm trying, we're trying to bring some more strategy to projects like that. Healthcare is a major issue. Senior, uh, senior transportation mobility, especially in areas like Portola Valley and Woodside, major issues that we're trying to address. Uh, and then they put me on just about every committee at the county. So I'm on, but that's the Clean Energy, One Shore Line, SAM Trans, TA. Also, I have a full, robust portfolio of work to do.
Well, I want to, um, invite the community to, um, ask you any questions that they'd be interested in doing. And right now I am not seeing any, I do see one hand raised from, um, Melissa. I think I'm going to need you to help with, uh, bringing.
I've got it over, I've got it over here, Sarah.
Okay, or Jeremy.
The first speaker is Rita.
Hello Supervisor Mueller. Um, congratulations on the position that you, uh, that you were able to be elected into. I noticed on your, uh, campaign paperwork that the previous town council 100% supported your campaign and, uh, and also one other past council member. And, you know, we still expect, uh, you know, special treatment in our town. We know that you have a relationship with our beautiful town. And I attended the last supervisor's meeting. It was the last one of your predecessor. And, uh, they had mentioned that there was going to be fire mitigation money, uh, that was awarded to Los Trancos, which I was very happy to hear, but the only way I knew about it was by attending that particular meeting. It was a long meeting and I was excited to see that on the agenda and happy that that particular item passed Los Trancos. Because, you know, when you're all in the pool, if somebody does one thing in the pool, you know, we all have to get out of the pool. And Los Trancos is part of our community. Uh, how can we have, you know, what's come out of those really incredible meetings, the things that pertain to each area, each town? How can that be communicated in a more manageable way? Because if you look to see what was approved that day, uh, you know, you'd miss lunch, you'd miss dinner, you'd miss everything. But that was really nice to hear, that particular thing being awarded to, uh, that extra money being awarded for fire mitigation to Los Trancos. How can we get that information? I, I, you know, I don't know how large your staff is, but please, if somehow that information could be passed on to us, not just somebody hearing it from me. I, I'm, I'm just a, a resident, but, um, that's exciting things that are happening and, uh, things that, you know, affect our community, touch on, on our community. We'd really like to know about it. Thank you for what you're doing.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you. And then that is one of the reasons why we want to get that GIS established so that every mitigation award and project going forward, a community member can just walk up to and click on the project at the location it's taking place and then pull up the amount of money and the, what the work is. And so that way, we're going to be able to identify and members of the public will be able to say, hey, why hasn't work taken place in this area or near, near where we live or in this city? And so we really want to bring more transparency. And also very candidly, what, uh, I've discovered in my years of public service is that that is not. that is not always a knowing decision that the work isn't taking place there. People are just trying to get work done. And, uh, and so areas identified, work gets done and everyone acting in good faith. And you still might, might see an area where money isn't getting allocated to. The only way that you're ever going to be able to find that out is be able to look at the map and graphically see it. I do have a staff of, 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 right, right, it'll be six people. It's four, but I split one of the positions into three. Uh, and so, um, we have a, a pretty good staff to get the word out. And we, we'll have a newsletter that will, that we'll be putting out, uh, to go ahead and reach. So if people want to go ahead and sign up for it, they can. So we can go ahead and share the information that's happening in the district. With respect to the fact that I was endorsed by the entire prior town council one, and one of the other former council members, I was, and I'm, I'm proud of the work that I, that I did with my colleagues across all of the different councils during the time I was on city council. One of the best things that you'll find serving is the ability to build relationships with the other cities and share experiences, try to get work done. So, um, I look forward to building that relationship with all of you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep. We have a couple more from.
The first is Caroline Vertonghen.
Good evening Supervisor Mueller. Thank you so much. I kind of feel sorry for you because you have inherited an array of problems. Not just the problems that we feel here in Portola Valley, but in the larger area of San Mateo County. I have worked with several of the elected officials. So I'm very interested in this study session. Um, and also, um, I would like to have all the contact information. You just mentioned you prefer transparency and you're working towards transparency. There's a lot that has been covered up in the last few years. And, um, I'm particularly thinking of not only fire safety, but there's a lot of, uh, problems in education, uh, problems in healthcare. And we have tried to address this with your predecessors. Unfortunately, nothing was done. So, um, can you please, uh, leave us all the contact information? So perhaps you can meet with you or with your staff on a personal basis and, and continue the work that we have been doing for at least the last decade, hoping that finally we will find some resolution. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So my chief of staff's email address is H Wilson, W I L S O N, at smcgov.org. Uh, so if you, if anyone wants to contact me or my office, Heather's amazing and she'll be able to connect you with the right person in the office.
Thank you. Next is Betsy Morgan Taylor.
Thank you. And congratulations Supervisor Mueller. You are already impressing me. Um, I'm, I'm excited to have you and your help. My question really is about how you might be able to support us specifically, but, but more broadly, all of the municipalities whom you represent. Given your statement about leftover money and give me a project, I agree with you. It's pretty ad hoc. The state is offering right now grants to help support our communities through this process of creating more housing. But in Portola Valley alone, over the last couple of years, we are, we're looking at significant budget increases every year. Couple million, not quite a couple of million dollars every year, but nearly, nearly so. The largest chunk of which is going to support, um, our, our housing mandates. So with such seriously overworked planning staff, such as we have, and our needs to hire new staff, we're probably looking at, um, down the road, not too far, some kind of parcel tax increases. And my concern really is, is this becomes a vicious cycle where property taxes start to go up and a housing, a, a community that is already, uh, an expensive place to live becomes more so. Uh, so we continue to price ourselves out. Is there some way that you can support us at the state level? And rather than having to be at the right place in the right time, knocking on the right door, that we can look on more dependable support from our state?
So, yeah, I, so I always try to be, set expectations. And at the state level, candidly, you know, one of the reasons why I'm a county supervisor is because it really appealed to me to have a board of five. I needed, uh, just two, three votes on as opposed to how many people you might need to in the state legislature to do something. Uh, so, uh, and as your county supervisor, what I can promise you is I'm going to be really focused in the district, trying to solve problems. I certainly have conversations with our state legislators about what's happening in Sacramento and the impact that it has in our district. And we'll continue to do that. Uh, but in terms of legislation, um, you'll see me, I, and I've, it's no secret, I've written editorials on legislation I thought were adversely impacting cities that, you know, one size fits all process. But, uh, that being said, the, the, the way that I'm going to be able to help you most candidly is when you have a project that you want to do. When the city or a project that this council is very interested in moving forward, um, or that applicant has brought forward. At that point, when there are problem areas in that project, for instance, you know, we're going to have, we're going to need to do engineering in the specific area. Or there's an access issue, or how do we, if there's something, uh, unique about the way that you want to have, or provide the affordable levels. That's when you come to the county and you come to me and say, Ray, we need help here. And we're going to be able to sit down with you and try to help figure it out. One of the things that I'm really interested in, uh, doing, and I'm right now looking at a project, uh, working on the state to try to create a project, a pilot project. So I'm very interested in that when we approach affordable housing, that we don't, no longer do it in the traditional aspect that's been done in the past, where we just set levels and we extract the amount, the most amount of money that a person can afford at that level. I'm very interested rather in community trust models where we, uh, we allow people to build a certain amount of equity in that pro, in that property and take it away over time. Because that, uh, what we've seen in studies is that that is the way that you best help a family, the next generation of the family is that, 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 that family had, was able to build some equity in their home. And so there's models that we're looking at the state right now, specifically with respect to farmworker housing, where the state's going to come in with us, help, uh, help to go ahead and create down payments. And then there'll be shared equity coming out of those projects. So as you look at what you're doing with affordable housing in your Portola Valley, if you want to be creative and think outside the box too, I want to have those conversations with you. But we, what I, what I don't want to do is, um, what, what I, what I don't want to do is candidly is just come in and say, I'm sorry, I can't help. I, I want to do something special in your city, so.
Thank you. I think that's everybody. So thank you so much for your time, um, being here in person with us tonight. And, um, we look forward to working with you in the months and years ahead.
I look forward to it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, we just had, do you want me to take those? Are you willing to take a couple? We had, had two, two additional hands go up. Kristy Corley.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller. It was nice to have you knock on my door and have some personal, um, questions earlier before the election. And now we have a few more questions. I'm concerned about traffic on Alpine Road. And we share Alpine Road with, I believe, you, unincorporated area over there and Menlo Park and Los Altos Hills. So how could you help us work together? Because we are on the border of San Mateo County and Santa Clara County. And we don't end halfway through Alpine Road. We need to continue driving to get to 280. So we need help doing the whole, uh, planning. And I'm big on not just eight-year planning, but let's look out 24 years. How can you help with, you know, Stanford adding students, faculty? And what's happening with the roads so they don't get so congested? Because right now our higher housing element, the majority is on Alpine Road that's, that we're projecting. So I am getting concerned about that. How can you work with us to work with different cities? To do the best we can do to get ready on a road.
Yeah, I mean, so if you're looking at a specific road, uh, the, what, and a specific project that affects that road, then the, what I'd be looking at candidly is, well, if there was an EIR attached to that project and whether or not the transportation's impact was done through a level of LOS analysis or vehicle mile travels analysis. And what I really would be trying to figure out is what the level of service analysis was. And then I would bring in our department of, uh, we, we'd have to bring in our transportation engineers to try to figure out what would be the best way to mitigate that, to drop the level of service down to where it really needed to be, uh, so that the impact wasn't adverse to the city. And so, but, um, and so that's really, when you're talking about Alpine Road and the impacts of a specific development, which I, I have not seen what that development is. But what I really, you know, I really try to go back to looking at what the, uh, what the measured impact metric is from the engineering department. And then what mitigation needs to take place in order to bring that level of service back to what the community expects with the level of safety that the community expects.
Greg?
Hello, just on muting. Greg Franklin, good evening, uh, Ray, and thank you very much for taking the time to, uh, visit with our town tonight. I want to return to the issue that was raised several times earlier, including by councilman around, uh, insurability. And specifically insurability in Wuii communities. And I was just sort of chuckling at your reference to being the de facto mayor of the unincorporated part of the county. I think we act. The issue in Wuii, addressing it is, uh, the fact that we don't have a lot of data collected. I, I've tried to get some of this data from insurance, uh, company associations and individual insurers. Um, but it's not really that easily payable. I think we're on a bit of a collision course between, um, the quadrupling of RENA quotas that we've experienced, uh, you know, I think throughout our county. Uh, and insurability and, you know, at least anecdotally, I can report several people in Portola Valley and out towards the coast that have had no other way of insuring their homes, but to resort to taking insurance from, uh, the fare plan, which you probably know is enormously expensive. And without going into any details tonight, I guess my question in conclusion is, would you be prepared to support, uh, a detailed survey of insurability, i.e. availability and cost within the Wuii communities of our county? Thank you.
Yeah, so the answer is yes. I mean, but so before I learned of the legislation that passed last year, what I intended to do and talked about while I was running was that I'm actually holding hearings on this issue. So the county, uh, Santa Clara County actually is in the practice of having committee meetings with hearings and San Mateo County doesn't. And I, uh, was actually interested in bringing that back. Depending upon what happens with this, uh, with the attempt to go ahead and bring people into compliance and bring people into compliance with the law, and then how that is actually received by the insurance companies really is going to inform how we move forward at the county. If it does turn out that insurance is being, uh, uh, offered at unaffordable levels, then that's something that we're going to need to address, obviously at the county level. And then also in partnership with our state legislators and really our insurance commissioner, who was the person who actually brought forward the legislation. And it's that fact that actually gives me hope that, uh, that we will be hopefully in a good faith scenario with the insurance companies, because that, the body that actually brought forward the legislation wasn't the legislator, but it was the insurance commissioner's office who regulates those agencies. So, um, but yes, the answer is yes. This is an issue that was, uh, important to me when I ran and continues to be important to me now, and we're going to push on it. So, but my hope is that, that there is going to be a good faith attempt, um, the, on behalf of all parties, that if there's compliance with the legislation, that people will be able to be insured at affordable rates.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. All right, with that, I'm going to close the study session and we will move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are voted on once by the body unless a member of the body requests an item to be considered separately. Members of the public are welcome to comment on any item on the consent, uh, calendar before the body votes. And so, um, I'd like to know if there are any public comments on the consent agenda items. See one hand raised, Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I'd like to, you know, if there can be a discussion and the items to be pulled is the warrant list that, uh, doesn't have any codes or budgets associated with the different, um, large amounts. Uh, lots of a couple of hundred thousand dollars worth of contractor payments, but no, uh, projects or codes associated with what projects they're associated with. And, um, and, and also, um, the audit for the readers. Uh, I'm very surprised that there were only, uh, 20 times that it was accessed in, uh, last year. 20 times, and it doesn't look like it was accessed on the evening of, or the day after, uh, that robbery that the gentleman that spoke earlier, um, you know, talked about. And so, um, you know, here we are, we're paying for these and we're dependent on it for our safety. But those are the two items. And so, um, the warrant list B and, uh, and item E for the, the town's audit, uh, for, associated with San Mateo County's audit on those, uh, those license plate readers. But the warrant list, I, I think it's really important that we address this issue, especially since we're talking about the budget later. Thank you.
Thank you Rita. Next, I believe, is Carolyn Vertonghen. Carolyn?
Uh, yes, I concur with Rita and, um, I hope that town council will look a little closer at the warrant list. This is an issue we have, um, asked, not asked, but we have addressed over the years with the previous town council. And they never, uh, wanted to deep in or go into the, the questions that we had and just, uh, glanced over and just approved it. But I hope this new town council will have a closer look, especially because we're running on a deficit budget. Thank you.
Thank you Carolyn. I don't believe we have any more hands up. Council members? Would you like to pull anything?
Yes, A, B, and E.
Okay, A, B, and E. A, B, and E. That leaves B and D, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Make a motion, uh, to approve those two items, C and D.
Sarah, second?
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Hafdi?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
All right, motion is approved and we will, um, move on to, is that we just take this in the order and the first pulled item? Judith?
Yeah, um, so the minutes have a few things that need to be fixed. Oral communications with Greg Franklin. The consent agenda is confusing because Jeff didn't announce the appointment. Yeah, I think what's missing here is announce that the appointment of Mary Ann Berkowitz to the Parks and Rec Committee would be postponed. Uh, because when we, that came up, we approved it except for her. So my recollection was we continued her candidacy and approved everyone else. So that shows up in a couple of different places. One with Jeff Alves, the mayor, what he announced. And I think it's, he announced the continuation of the appointment. And then in D, uh, Mary Ann Berkowitz would be pulled out because I think she's been pulled from the consideration. Then on the regular agenda, it says for Craig's and my colleagues' memo that it was approved unanimously, but we pulled one of the bullet points in it about the inclusionary housing. We, we pulled that because there's going to be a separate subcommittee working on that. So I think instead of saying the motion carried, I think you probably have to say in that paragraph, something that to develop a strategy of related policies for affordable housing implementation or something like that, but we did not, Craig, and correct me if you recall it differently, uh, we did not include that bullet point about inclusionary housing expenditures. Let me know if you agree with that.
Yeah, I think we were going to have another subcommittee start to flesh it out. So, yeah, because so we did initially propose it and then we sort of pulled it down.
Yeah. And then uh, the last part was phrasing, um, that Mary and I would be on a subcommittee to work on the in lieu housing fund. It's really a question. Is that the same thing as the inclusionary fund? Is it different? Uh, it's a little unclear to me because I thought this was a preview of Mary's memo on inclusionary housing fund. So.
So I can clarify that one. That is, it's confusing, especially when you're brand new. There are multiple terms for the same thing. So, yes.
So it's meant, it's okay as is because it's the same thing. That's fine.
But I think I heard a request at the last meeting for us to pick one name and stick with it. So I think we should definitely do that. Okay. But it is.
Well, I don't think we need to, we can take it outside of the meeting. I mean, they, yeah, it's a name.
The minutes can stay, yeah, as they are for now, but then we're going to have a separate discussion later.
Right. Well, you guys have a whole subcommittee to work on that. Yeah. Yeah. And how about in that subcommittee, you figure out which of the multiple names that we have for it?
Yep.
That'll be our free trial.
Okay. All good.
Just inclusionary housing would be great.
Are there any other comments on the minutes?
Um, well, I, I just want to echo.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, when you go down to Jeremy's summary of the framework that we agreed to, there are, I think it was safety, fiscal responsibility and effective governance. I think we just said revenue and budget rather than revenue enhancement. I'm not sure I care that strongly, but I was going to ask to, to go back and listen and be accurate about what we ended up doing there. We also discussed infrastructural operations and services. And we also discussed sustainability and exclusivity. So those aren't on here and I'm a little confused whether, I don't recall picking and choosing. I just thought we were ordering and we generally thought that all of those deserve some merit for consideration for the next session. So I think it's, you know, I would add infrastructural operations, services, sustainability and diversity as the last one. And, okay. And resilience. Yeah, that was part of it.
So I think on, on that one, we can definitely make that update. Just, we are, that was the first of two discussions on what the priorities are. So to refine it is the next step, just so you know, in terms of the process.
I'm aware of that, but we discuss more and it's important that if we're going to use this as a touch point for the next discussion, that we have a relatively inclusive list here, even though it's going to be refined, maybe.
Can I ask Melissa for making a motion on these minutes? Do we have to have all of these edits included in what that motion is or?
You can just say as amended.
Okay. I just was trying to keep track and I want to make sure that we're getting them all. Thank you.
So back to you, Craig. I, I.
No, 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 you're fine. Yeah. So I, this isn't the perfect place to have this conversation, but we, in the next month, we have a lot of stuff that's going to come up. And I found reading through these minutes, they were confusing and I was at the meeting. I couldn't remember all the details. And going back to watch the video is craziness. So I really think Judith and I pushed for basically some kind of transcription on minutes for planning commission. I believe we should do the same thing for the council. So I don't know if Cara or Melissa can help me figure out where the right place to propose this, or if we do it at the next meeting. But I think this is pretty critical and we're going into a very critical time right now. So we really don't want to leave this for another month and a half because by that point, a lot of water is going to be under this bridge. So, um, and, and I think Judith's comments did a nice job of highlighting what I wanted to bring up, which was my just general confusion over the meeting that I was at. So I, I realized that, you know, maybe I should remember more of it, but going back to watch the video of the meeting is just really asking a lot.
I see Cara's joining us.
So Cara, would you like to speak to this question?
Sure. Uh, one of my favorite topics. Um, no, this is, this is, uh, solidly a, a council prerogative. You can have a transcription or transcribed minutes. It does, it, it certainly has a cost impact and a resource impact with staff because staff still has to review the transcript and answer, you know, the additional questions that come up through the transcription of the meeting. So what I would suggest is that you agendize it for your next meeting as a policy discussion and, and the staff will be able to return with information regarding, uh, resources and, and budget impacts. And the community will of course be able to, to comment on that item.
Okay. And all that sounded good, except I'm hoping that staff could come to that next meeting with information so we can have a full discussion at that meeting.
Exactly. Yes.
So that, that's, that's fine. That, and that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, do you have any comments on the, okay. So can I entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the amended comments?
As amended.
As amended.
So, so moved as amended.
Is there a second?
Call. Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Hafte?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
I.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Right. Moving on to the next item. Um, Judith, would you like to take that?
So this is the warrant list, right?
Yes.
Um, I do think we are getting to the point where the expenditures, in particular for the housing element are, are really mounting up. And it might be that I'm new, uh, but I do find these printouts confusing. You got the line item list, some numbers are really significant. And then you get, in some cases, a, a more granular description of what it is. And I can whittle out a lot of, a lot of line items there. Oh, that's a reimbursement. That's a refund of a deposit. But I do have a couple that I wanted to understand and I am going to ask the question whether there's a different way to organize this. So the refunds are pulled into a different area because I, I think we all understand those are going to be more mechanical. And then for anything that's of the magnitude that we're spending, for example, on, on the housing element update, you know, we have a line item for a hundred twenty four thousand, et cetera, from November. We might want to know what that is at a, a more granular level. I'm not trying to get into at such a granular level, but I do think that trying to monitor what we're spending and the resources on the safety element and the housing element, it's starting to get concerning to me that the numbers are that big with not a breakdown available. So I will ask what for the PV housing and safety element update in November, that line item for a hundred twenty five thousand, was that for the consultants? That, um, do we know if someone could comment on that? That would be helpful. And then similarly, the, the law enforcement, I have a feeling this is our renegotiated contract, right? But if you could. Yeah. Yeah. But it, but what's that for? It says financial year, but then it says Q three. So I'm not quite sure what, what that represents.
Jeremy, do, do you want to take?
If I can take those backwards, um, we, we have not renegotiated our contract with the sheriff's office. That's happening. So we pay, um, regular payments, um, over the course of a year. I believe there's four a year that go to the sheriff's office. This is one of the four. And then Laura, you could, if you want to answer any questions around the housing element update.
The large invoice for the housing element in the safety element line item is when we got the invoice from Urban Planning Partners that included all of the sub consultants. Um, and so those were all lump sum invoices that were attached to the urban planning partners. Um, so that's for all the studies and analysis that went into primarily into the mitigated negative declaration.
And Laura, if you recall, because these bills are lagging, which I understand completely, are there equal ones coming up or is it just going to be very sporadic? I'm trying to get a sense of trend on this over the next, until through March.
This is the biggest one, um, the biggest single invoice that we'll have for this whole process probably. Um, because we were paying for all of the sub consultants' work at one time. So the rest are more incremental based on the work that was completed during that month.
Okay. Thank you.
And through the chair, Sarah, I don't know if this is helpful or not. The warrant list has changed a bit since we moved to a new, um, software system. This is what comes out of that system. So if the council is interested in additional information, it would be helpful to hear that, not tonight, yeah, because it's not agendized, but it would be helpful to hear that, um, to see if we can do something different. Completely broken record, you know, obviously any change to this will be more staff time. And I can, I can riff a little bit here, um, you know, certainly, you know, any, any invoice we get is a public document. We can, we can make those available. I don't think we've ever put invoices in the past in, in the warrant list at all. And it's a reminder, the warrant list is sort of an unusual thing that we have here in town. Most towns have a check registry because things have been paid. The warrant list, we're actually seeking your approval to pay budgeted items. That's different. Um, and part of, part of the reason that can be challenging from time to time is that people want their payments quicker than we can turn them around, given our process. So something to consider is, is part of, of that, uh, you know, any future discussion on this, on this item. Hope that, hope that helps. Thanks.
Does. Thank you.
Does that answer your?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on the warrant list? Would anybody like to make a motion for approval of the warrant list?
I moved to approve the warrant list.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Haskell?
Hi.
Councilmember Hafte?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, and the last item Judith was item number E.
Yeah, there seemed, I was a little confused by the plate readers again, probably because I'm new. Um, I did see that Howard accessed it presumably to just make sure the system's running. But then there is the separate San Mateo County Sheriff's Office audit that says that the office logged into their Learn portal. So can somebody in plain English just tell me what, how to interpret the sheriff's report? Because I think the town report's pretty easy.
Sure. And if I can build off that through the chair, uh, your, your analysis of the town side of this is correct. So, uh, Howard and I both have access. I've got administrator rights. Howard has a, a, a specific version of that that doesn't give them access to the information that the, um, that the license plate reader is actually reading. So he's doing regular maintenance when you see these sort of things, a camera might go out or something else is going on. The county of, uh, San Mateo, like a number of agencies, has access to our ALPR data uh, through the agreements that we have in our, um, i- i- in the relationships. We have one organization in particular, NCRIC, Northern California Regional Information Center. So that's shared with a number of different police and sheriff jurisdictions in, um, uh, in the Northern California. So the way that this works is that the, um, sheriff's office can review data that our cameras capture in the course of any investigation that they feel would be useful in that time. And last year, they believed that access to the camera data was useful in one specific circumstance as described, um, on page, twenty four of the, the packet. As I understand how access works, it's one of many pieces of information that the sheriff's office potentially looks at in the course of an investigation. Um, I know that camera data becomes much less useful in and of itself. If a person's been out of town for more than a day or two, it becomes more difficult to figure out, um, you know, what's going on. Um, so when we have folks who leave town for a week or two or three weeks, or sometimes a month or more, the, um, the sheriff's office isn't going to be accessing camera data first. They may get there later based on other information that they seek. So without providing too much level of detail, I know that the burglary that was mentioned earlier tonight, I am very sure that the sheriff's office has looked at ALPR data. Uh, it'll be part of next year's audit as it relates to this, as they were, um, able to identify other pieces of identifying information as they, as they weave this together. Um, so I hope that that's helpful. It is not atypical to see the sheriff's office only access our data a few times in a year, given the, the different, um, other pieces of information that may or may not be available to help. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, so they accessed the Learn portal 2,400 times, but really they were looking at a Portola Valley issue once specifically. Okay. Thank you.
And, and the 2,433 times does not include Portola Valley data?
No, 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 no. It's only the one time. They would have accessed their learn system that many times. And then they did, uh, inquiries, you can see interplate inquiries, you can see how many uh, times they accessed that information, um, through the Learn portal. So you can get data, you can get a little more information depending on what you're looking for, but there was only one, um, access specifically in Portola Valley cameras.
And can you remind me how much we paid to install this system and what our annual costs are?
Yeah, the installation was approximately $210,000 in that range. That was, um, a mix of cameras, both vigilant, which has subsequently been purchased by Motorola and a third party camera. Uh, the, an equal amount of that cost was associated with running electricity to, uh, the sites, uh, where the cameras are installed. Yeah, it was about a hundred thousand of that $200,000, I believe. And was, I'm sorry, Craig, was there another question?
Um, yeah, I was just under, was curious what our annual costs are.
Oh, they're, they're very moderate. They're, um, I believe seven to $10,000 a year, um, on maintenance. Now, one thing I do want to bring up here is our five-year agreement expired with Motorola um, in the last year. So I've actually been speaking to other providers of cameras to see if there's an opportunity to um, augment, improve, replace otherwise the systems. One resident mentioned the flock cameras. Those have become very popular in jurisdictions in the last 24 months or so. They're much less expensive. Um, they actually have a pretty impressive, uh, solar capability, even a couple of hours a day is enough. So I've been engaging with them since, uh, November to see about, um, opportunities in town. I'm actually expecting something from, um, those providers. And if there's something interesting there, I will bring it forward to the council for their, for your review.
Okay. I, I guess there's, I'm asking is, when I looked at this, I, I guess I was fairly disappointed. This doesn't seem like a very effective crime fighting tool. And I certainly hear the concerns of the residents tonight about finding an effective way to protect our community. And I wonder if this isn't just false security. If we get one access in a year, that just doesn't feel like we've got the right solution. So, but.
Is that a, is that a comment or is there a question that you want me to answer?
I don't know. You could see if I'm, you could ask, you could tell me if I'm missing something.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I think it's an important dialogue. You know, the supervisor mentioned that, um, you know, he's aware of some evidence that when the cameras come in, that crime changes. I, I mean, I think that there's some anecdotal evidence where that's true. Um, there are other times, for instance, Atherton put in a number of flock cameras in 2020 and their burglaries went up in 2021. So, you know, as, as a deterrent factor, a lot of things have to go right for the camera to be particularly useful. I would say publicly that the cameras are probably more, um, um, useful in capturing the less smart criminal. Criminals steal cars, they change license plates, they do all kinds. Criminals steal cars, they change license plates, they do all kinds of things that make it very difficult to track them. So they're clearly not necessarily disturbed by a camera. When the town council reviewed this, they reviewed it three times over the course of a year or so in 2015, 2016. As part of the discussion, it, you know, we made it very clear that this is only one small piece of all of the types of information that the sheriff's office could potentially use, that it was not a silver bullet in any way. And, you know, we want to do everything we can to make sure residents understand that, you know, we have 100% coverage in town with the ALPRs, but you know, there, there are circumstances related to any of these specific crimes that may make data from the ALPR less effective in capturing criminals.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion for approval?
So moved.
Um, Sarah, I think there's a couple of comments in the public.
We already took public comment, though, on.
Yep, thanks.
Second.
Call call. Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefte?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, with that, I think we can move on to our regular agenda. And we have some guests here tonight. The first item is the results of the ADU, JADU survey. And so we have members from the survey team here with us. So thanks, guys, for being here. And with that, I will give the floor to Patty Dews, who is representing the ADU survey team tonight.
The microphone on? I'm not sure. It's hard to hear.
It's full screen.
It's full screen.
Hello, test?
Yeah, you're just gonna have to get, you're gonna have to be much, you're gonna have to be this close, you're gonna have to be this close to it. Yeah, huddle, baby.
It's like this, like this, Patty.
No, just, just pull the mic right up close. Or you can hold, but yeah, that.
Like a rock star?
There you go. That's my like it.
Okay, this is my moment to shine here.
Rock on.
All right. Is that all right?
Perfect.
Are we good to go?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Patty Dews. I'm pleased to be here. Thank you for asking me. I'm usually here to bring problems. So nice to talk about something positive. Tonight I'm going to be reviewing the ADU survey summary results. For those of you online, I am going to be showing a lot of graphs tonight. Some of them are a little more detailed and difficult to read. So if you want to follow along in your own packet at home, you're welcome to do that as well. Here's our agenda for tonight. I'm going to introduce our team. I'm going to go over our original goals. Talk a little bit about our summary of key results for both the general survey and the amnesty survey. Key takeaways. Then talk about potential next steps in areas of collaboration with the town. Getting used to this, sorry. We had an incredible team that Sarah and Jeff put together. And a lot of them are here in the audience with me. Raise your hand. Some are online. There were seven of us. Very passionate folks about what we were doing. I'm very happy to contribute to the town for this. Sarah and Laura did ask us to try and quantify the amount of time that we spent on this, so we just took a a swag. We had about 10 meetings, a lot of sub-team meetings, a lot of activity between meetings. Approximately 40 hours per person times seven people. So we put about 280 hours into this. Well, well spent, I believe. These were our original goals. They have not changed. I'll go over a lot of them as I go through the results. I think we did a really good job on all of these with possible exception of the second one. And I'll go into some of the challenges that we had with that as I go through the data. This was the timeline that we had. We started in October with the original interviews. We had our first team meeting October 19th. About two months later, we came back to the town council to review the survey outline, the questions, the content, which was approved. We launched the survey on January 3rd. Postcard went out to the residents in the town. We had posters, we had banners, we had the PV forum, we had the town weekly. We had sandwich boards at Roberts. We had, we did a little bit of everything. We tried to do the fly and plane banner thing, but the budget got in the way. We closed the survey on January 18th and you're going to see the results from January 3rd through the January 18th. We got a total of 578 responses from validated addresses in Portola Valley. That I'm told is a 35% response rate of the single-family households that we have, which I hear is a phenomenal response rate. So I want to thank everyone in Portola Valley that, that responded. Obviously, the more the better, but we, we think we've got some great data to show you. So we think it's really response, responsible, representative of, of the town. And the last one there is, is the representative. We got at least one response from 87% of the street addresses, streets in Portola Valley. So everybody stepped up. Okay, now I'm going to go through the results. First question we asked was, do you have an existing ADU or JADU that went through the town's permitting process? So remember, we had 578 responses. 95 respondents responded, if I can be redundant, but yes, they did have an ADU or a JADU. The town provided us a report that showed they have records of 248 permitted secondary units. Obviously, that's a difference. Obviously, we did not get 100% response on the survey, so we would not expect them to match. We did try and look at the two reports, but it was inconclusive. We had some people on the survey who said, yes, we have one of those. They didn't show up on the town report. And some people on the survey said, no, I don't have one of those. Guess what? It showed up on the town report. So instead of focusing really maybe on the number that I'm representing here, I think one of the takeaways, and you'll hear me kind of repeat this a couple of times, it's really about confusion of terminology, education, misinformation. You know, what is an ADU? What is a JADU? What's a pool house? What's a secondary unit? Lot of terms we use, lot of confusion, real opportunity for education. I think that's what that points out. The second point here is a combination of a couple of questions. Are you interested in building or converting an AADU or JADU? What's important to point out in this graph is these bars are not additive. So in other words, what I want to say is the survey's questions went like such. First option was, are you very interested in building the next one to two years? Picked two years because we wanted it to coincide a little bit with the sunrise program to see how much potential interest we had right away or close. Second check was, are you very interested in the next three to eight years? Which coincided obviously with the, the Reno cycle. And then the last checkbox was, are you somewhat interested in that, or that time? Well, people could check every box. And you know what? People did check every box. So we, we couldn't add them all up and tell you that we had that many. So what you get is 113 people are very interested in the first one to two years. But then that number's included in the 181, and the 181's included in the next, does that make sense? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else I forgot there? Okay. I'm going to keep going and I guess we'll get questions at the end. Okay, then the next question obviously is, okay, are you willing to build or convert? Then are you willing to rent it? And again, this is just high-level rent. Are you willing to rent? Some people already have people in their, their unit. Again, these two next bars are not additive because people could check multiple boxes. Are you very interested in renting? Or are you very, or somewhat interested in renting? Obviously, the good news is we've got a lot of people who are very interested, someone who's in building, very interested, somewhat interested in renting. Now, the devil's in the details because as we know, in the housing element, you have to be able to rent those at affordable rates across the, the spectrum of, of the income. So then the next question is, would you be willing to rent at these monthly rates? Now, these are not additive. So even though people could, so we had questions about certain income levels for a one-person unit, a two-person unit, or a four-person unit. They could check multiple boxes. What we took was the lowest rate that they would be willing to rent at. That's what's reflected here. So again, what we think is promising results. 72 of people responded to say that they were very or somewhat interested renting in the extremely low to very low income levels. 55 in the low, 75 in the moderate to above moderate, which is closest to market. That's how you kind of put some of those numbers together. We then asked people what barriers exist for you to build or convert an AD, JDU. We encourage people to check five or fewer. Quite frankly, there were some people that checked every single box. So there's a perception out there that there's a lot of barrier. Not surprisingly, if you look at the top three to five, the number one item is financial. We all know about the cost of construction in Portola Valley. People are concerned about how much is it going to cost for me to build it? What money do I have available? What are permit fees? Other financial items, as you go down the list, concern about the impact of the property tax. You know, other financial related issues. The second bucket that you kind of look at is, please make it easy. Make it easier. If you just look at the second one on there, process issues, permitting, timeline, you know, et cetera, inspections, what's involved? How much time do I have to spend? Please make it easier. And the third one is kind of what I talked a little bit about before. It was a combination of financial, but it's education as well. Look at the third one, sewer versus septic. I don't know. What do I have? What do I need? There's another one down there about electrical panel. Do I need another lec, do I need a new electrical panel? Zoning issues. What can I build? How big can I build? Where can I build? Are there slope issues? Are there safety issues? So there's a lot of barriers that go into people's decision about whether they can have the capability to build an ADU or JDU regardless of the interest that they showed, right? Okay? And then we asked them, but then what can we do to help to make it easier for you to build? And the good news is, if you look at some of these, the bars, you'll see in parentheses, like at the end of the first, first one, provide pre-approved ADU, JDU plans that require minimal additional engineering. That's the top thing the town could do to encourage our residents to build, convert, and rent an ADU, JDU. In the housing element submission that we did under the area, section seven, goals, policies, and programs, program 7.7 already addresses this. You can see one, two, three, four, there's five of these that we have already put into the home, the housing element program. Opportunities or ways that we are going to begin to address these. We're going to be put together a, a, a pre-approved plan so that people don't have to think about design, engineering, whatever. We're going to get some established staff in here for consulting. We're going to look at, at an amnesty program, things that people brought up that the town could do, we are already starting to look at. Then we did ask about the amnesty program. So there are a couple of ways that people could get to the amnesty program. When you finish the survey and you hit submit, you'd get a thank you note and then you could say, please, do you want to fill out an amnesty survey? And it provided a link for you to do that. You could also go to our webpage and there was a link there. We tried to stress as much as possible anonymity in this survey so that we could get as many respondents as we could get. Don't know how successful we were, but we tried to stress it. We did get 67 people responding, 33 which had unpermitted units, and 30 which were interested in amnesty program. So if you look at the two items there, the first chart is, are you interested in a program? Well, it's no surprise, the devil's in the details. Tell me what it is and then I'll tell you if I'm interested, right? What are the details? The second one, I think, is, is kind of promising. 22 of those 33 units are not currently rented. So if we can find a way to get people to bring these units up to permit, you know, that's kind of a very easy way to get additional ADUs and get these, these units rented without a lot of building costs, hopefully. Hey, then key takeaways. We were very encouraged by the response rate and the people who indicated a willingness to build or convert and then rent and then potentially rent at the right affordability levels that we need them to build to be able to count toward our Reno and Outland. We think this plan and the numbers that came, that, that a result of this survey support the numbers that we have in the current draft housing element plan. Remember, we have 92 ADUs, I believe, in there. We think this supports that in a realistic plan to build those over the cycle. As I noted, I think there are, we think there are opportunities for the town to remove barriers. We've already got programs in place to, to plan for that to encourage more ADU and JADU construction, conversion, and rental. As I mentioned before, there's a significant need for education. We have a lot of data out there. If you look at our website, the survey team itself developed some new data. The planning department's had a lot of data out there for a long time. Some of it's pretty high level, some of it's very detailed. What we're hearing is it's not enough, it's not at the right level, it's not in the right places. Don't know what it is, but there's real confusion out there about definition requirements. What's an ADU? What's a JADU? There's neighborhood-specific restrictions. What's, what's, what are you able to build in Porta Madera versus Woodside Highlands versus, you know, central, central Portola Valley? And then there's confusion about the legality of second units. You know, how do I bring it up to permit? What do I have to do? What programs can you do to help me? Last takeaway is, is really positive. I mean, this was a work group appointed by the, the town council, thank you very much, led by Sarah and Jeff. And in my humble opinion, it really worked. I mean, I believe we accomplished a lot in a very short period of time. Very, very proud of what we did. Very proud of the residents for, you know, stepping up to help us through this process. But we got a lot done and, and supporting a, a great cause and getting some great information. So we think, little biased, but we think work groups work. So we were going to get a T-shirt made, but we didn't. Okay, all right. So then there are some considerations for, for the collaboration. And we call this collaboration because I think this is a real, moving forward, a real necessary step in whatever work group we define as kind of phase two, if there is such a thing for the ADU survey team and the planning department. So how can those two groups work together to, you know, what's the next process for following up with people who responded to the survey? If there is one. You know, do we have a follow-up survey? Do we have follow-up phone calls? Do we have another survey? Do we have another survey? Do we get focus groups together? How can we use the information that we got at a pretty high level to get down to another level of detail that really helps us as a town and as a planning department? You know, how do we encourage as a town affordable rents? That is a big solution that we have to have for the homing, for the, for the housing element. How do we encourage people to be able to afford to build and convert in Portola Valley but still rent at the rates we need to rent at? HCD is going to have a lot of requirements going forward. How do we track those? If we're going to rent at low income levels, we have to be able to support that. Are people going to be willing to provide the data necessary for us to be able to support that? Talked a lot about education. What other educational materials do we need to have out there? What format? How did we deliver them? So that people feel comfortable with the material, with the information that they're getting so that they can make decisions? And then how does the planning department use this, this information to build their own department? Talked a lot about, you know, Laura's resource level. What resource planning does she need? What skills does she need? Is there a way to filter things into her department so that she's not hit with every single question? And how do we make her job and her, her department more efficient? And, you know, more efficient for the entire town? So that residents feel they have resources. Town feels that they have the opportunity and we all feel successful. So, I think that's the end of my rock star presentation.
Thank you, Patty.
Anything, anything I missed? Team?
I'm going to try and be disciplined about the process and save my comments till later and I will start with questions. So, let's go, go through. You want to start there, Craig?
Sure. So first of all, thank you guys for spending the time and energy to put this together. Just in terms of questions, not comments. So you had five hundred and seventy-eight responses. Three hundred and eleven were yeses. Can I infer that two hundred and sixty-seven were no's? It was, I mean, one thing was really hard for me to tell in looking at the numbers is you got all these responses, but I couldn't interest it. So is that a reasonable assumption to sort of assume that two, two sixty-seven is the no's? I mean, some of these things do add, I mean, they kind of add up, right? I get that some of the other things are sort of multiple bounded and they don't add up.
Yes, you can infer roughly that whatever number I didn't have there less than five seventy-eight is a, no, I'm not interested.
Okay, great. Because I would recommend that as we sort of collect all this information, that we put that there as well, because it makes it easier to sort of understand the fraction of people that had no, that responded but still had no interest, if we, if we think it was a good sample.
We have that data, yes.
Yeah, great. And then the other question is similar to that. On the rented units, it was thirty-one. And there was an eight, nine, and seven, which didn't add to thirty-one. And is that just people just didn't answer all the questions?
Correct, yeah.
So we just got incomplete?
Yeah, yeah, you can't, you can't solve for zero, yeah, yeah.
So again, my recommendation might be that on some of these, you just put, you know, nine answers incomplete, just, just so there's a sense that you can go, oh yeah, this group actually sums up to this other thing. And the fact that you didn't get an answer is okay, you know, like no answer would be an okay category to summarize. Right? Because then I'd be confident that I understood where the numbers were flowing up through this thing.
Right. We did have some questions where there was an other. And we didn't summarize the other, but other could be a component of no answer.
Absolutely. That would be great, yeah, okay.
I just love the work, work groups work. And I think that work groups are, are really the solution to a lot of the town's problems. So I'm thrilled it worked for you all. My question is maybe not for you, Patty, but it keeps coming up in my mind is how, is what you said was how do you maintain this affordability over time? And what kind of timeline are we giving people who are asking for, for ADUs? In other words, or who are asking for construction of ADUs or to be supported in there? And it, does it have to be five years that they have, that they meet a certain level of, of rent? Or does it have to be ten? Or do they have to pay back the money when they? Sorry, but these are the questions that people are asking. Do they have to pay the money back if they rent it for more than that, you know? How are you, how are the, how, what is that timeline?
Patty, I'm looking at Laura here, yeah.
I'm deferring to Laura. I'm punting over to you, Laura.
Thank you. These are very important questions. And when we were working with the ADU team, the idea was to get the first level of data to understand if people might be interested in renting at lower incomes. And then as a potential phase two, to go back and ask follow-up questions. Like, would they be willing to rent for eight years, for example, consistent with the Housing Element timeline? Or what other kinds of incentives might be necessary? So we have not answered your questions yet. We were exploring the first level of data.
The answer to my question was eight years. We have to, there has to be a binding clause for eight years.
No, no, this is a, this is a new area that, you know, everyone is exploring right now. You know, deed restrictions for traditional affordable housing developments are very long. So typically fifty-five years. And it's very obvious that that doesn't make sense for an ADU, given the nature of ADUs and property usage of single-family properties. And so we would need to explore what are some of the best practices and what do we think that HCD and others would support for a timeline? So as we were working through this process, we were thinking we would start with that eight-year time horizon as something reasonable as a starting point. So that's not a definitive answer, but that's what we were going to explore.
Thank you.
And Laura, can I just follow on with that? I mean, isn't the driver here no net loss? I mean, however we do it, it's just really, you have to have no net loss of units.
Um, I mean, I wouldn't say that that's the driver. No net loss is a, is an important concept that we have to have available sites that continue to be available if our housing sites are built at lower densities than what we proposed in the Housing Element. But in terms of ADUs, the important part is to be able to provide a justification that we are actually have ADUs that are housing lower-income people and create programs to support that and create a method to keep track of that so that we can document that with HCD.
But I guess to keep, what I meant by no net loss was if we have ninety-some that we expect to be there and if we don't, let's say we don't necessarily push eight years, we have some other model. The point is, we have to keep that level constant. You know, basically amortized over the eight years.
Well, we want to because we want to show progress on our Housing Element numbers through our annual report. But it's not, we don't have to produce that exact number of units every year. We're just trying to produce that ninety-two ADUs by the end of the eight-year cycle. So we're, we want to keep progress because there are other laws that come into effect. There's other state housing laws, in particular SB thirty-five that is kind of like a penalty for not meeting your progress. But HCD knows it's going to go up a little, up and down a little bit, and that's just part of the situation, just, just part of the expectations.
Yeah, I guess what I was trying to get at is, do we have options besides an eight-year commitment? Are there other ways we could do that as long as we maintained our steady upward progress toward ninety?
Definitely. The eight-year affordability commitment is just an idea at this point.
Okay, any questions?
Yep. Just a very basic one. When you say, the question number two, are you interested in building or converting an ADU or JADU? The converting piece was converting an existing portion of a building that is not currently an ADU or a JADU into an ADU?
That's correct, like a, an extra bedroom or a pool house or something like that, yes.
Okay, great. And because this was phase one, there was one thing that I think people will be interested in, and I don't think you even tried to cover, was average cost differences between JADUs and ADUs being built, right? You didn't get to that level of.
Not to that level of detail. I mean, certainly, there, there is some information in the informational materials that will give you a better feel for JADU conversion, which obviously is a lot less expensive than an ADU. But no, we didn't get to that level of detail in the questioning.
Okay. And for amnesty, if you know, great, otherwise I'll ask Laura, somebody else. If someone's currently renting out at moderate level and we grant them amnesty, I assume that counts for the RENA number as long as it's happened in the eight-year period? Or does it ever count for a RENA number?
I think the answer is it depends, but I'll let Laura.
Yeah.
Yes, it depends. Yeah. So we feel confident with the legal interpretation that if someone applies through our amnesty program that will develop in the future and they need some kind of building permit in order to formalize or legalize that unit. So the most common things might be your, you have a water heater that's not properly installed, or you have to upgrade your electrical to meet basic safety standards. Maybe you need to install a wall or make a plumbing change. If you do those things and get a building permit, we feel pretty confident that then we can put that ADU on the books because there's been a trigger that we can record for that. And in my experience, implementing an amnesty program in another city, it's very common that you're going to have at least a minor building permit when you legalize an unpermitted ADU. If there's no permit, it's a little bit more gray area. In our preliminary conversations with HCD on this topic, they weren't, they didn't close it down completely, but they didn't have a clear answer for us. So we would try to also count any units that did not have a building permit associated with them and make a case for that with HCD and see if they accepted it.
Okay, that's really helpful.
I'm sorry, we did ask a lot more questions in the amnesty survey, which we did not summarize for you here about the number of bedrooms when it was built. That's information that we'll certainly share with Laura and that potentially could feed into the answers to some of your questions.
Yeah, that's really helpful. And we have two other questions right now. On the education, I mean, it's clear to me, I mean, I need the education, never mind people who haven't been reading all these acronyms. Did anybody comment what might be the most helpful? Or is that a stage two or a phase two inquiry? Any anecdotes?
I, you know, again, I hate to say it depends, but I think it's a stage two. I mean, there are some very simple, simple's a very bad word, but there are very some basic answers to questions that you can provide. Like, well, I was going to say AMFA, but MFA is actually always not that simple. But, but sometimes it can be very simple. It's can I build given AMFA? Then the next level is, what about slope? Well, that's much more difficult. And we have so many unique properties in Portola Valley that you can't just answer slope for everybody. So that's, that's where it becomes more difficult. When it becomes very unique to your property is when it becomes more difficult.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me conversion is going to avoid a lot of these issues as long as the building's properly structured and permitted in the first place. And JADU may be easier than a full ADU conversion.
Right.
Because it's, you know, just a bit less of a property.
And we do want to try and encourage, I think JADUs are an area where we can make a huge dent in education because it is simpler, it's less expensive. And we think that they lend themselves a little better maybe to lower-income rents as well, caregiver and aide, whatever. So there's some great basic education we can get out there, and then there's some higher-level stuff that's just going to make it tougher.
Yeah. I mean, before I ask my last question, it's amazing work and it's amazing you got the participation. It's really encouraging. So kudos to the town and kudos to you guys in particular. And thank you. What, now this whole, your conclusion at the end was this supports our ninety-two accessory dwelling unit numbers. Was that your mission? Because you've clearly got a lot more data and it's, you know, in part anecdotal. But is that also a phase two potential? Like what, what if we wanted to educate on JADUs? Can we rerun numbers if people are more informed on being willing to exceed? So A, was it, am I correct that your intent was just to support the current ninety-two number? Or were you being more freewheeling with the effort?
So maybe I'll let the other team kind of, team members chime in. I wouldn't say that our mission was initially to support the ninety-two numbers because we didn't know what the heck we were going to get.
Okay.
You know, we, we really had no clue. I, I think our goal was to provide enough data to make us believe that the numbers were achievable. If that's the same thing or the different thing. I don't know, Laura can probably, you know, chime in as well. I certainly think phase two, the, the answer to your next question would certainly be more of phase two. You know, we have a lot of barriers to overcome, in my humble opinion, and maybe this is just my personal opinion, before we can even think about ninety-three or ninety-four or ninety-five, much less even more. There's just too many things here that, that are unknowns and things we have to overcome. But, but that being said, I still think there's a lot of positivity here that supports the ninety-two. I don't know. Team, would you say anything different?
Thank you. Any other questions? Let's go to public comment. I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse or online right now. Do you see anybody? Is there any public comment?
Is there a possibility, I, I got one message that is recording, but they're not receiving, you're not able to hear.
Because Laura has been responding to us.
You mean, I have to do it over?
No, oh, well.
No, I'm a one-and-done type of gal. I don't know.
Is there any public comment? Okay, thank you.
Caroline Vertonghen.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you very much, Patty. That was incredible. I hope staff will learn from you. I just have a question. But there's several obstacles and I don't know where, where to start. So you have this wonderful survey that you accomplished. Five hundred and seventy-eight responses. I can understand why not the whole town was involved and I will be happy to disclose why. There's a lot of gray market going on. But the, the ones who participated, yes, were willing. I hope that the new town council will evaluate the policies that were put in place in the last five years that actually raised questions. You know, we have a lot of questions about parking because in certain areas of Portola Valley, they lowered the parking issue and they allowed parking on the street. But of course, that then causes an issue with evacuation. But of course, that then causes an issue with evacuation routes and stuff like that. There's so many issues and I cannot stress it. If I'm talking about water quality, water pressure that we don't have in Portola Valley. We have no utility. We have asked the staff to communicate with our utility companies because we don't have reliable communication, reliable telephone communication, reliable internet, reliable cellphone communication. And we don't have the infrastructure because all the utilities have neglected their infrastructure. And I'm talking about Call Water, I'm talking about the sewer. This all plays a role in, yes, we want to participate in adding, you know, or converting our rooms into affordable housing, but we know, because we have addressed these issues with the town council for so many years and they have failed to address them. So, we have really realistic concerns. Patty, you did a wonderful job and hopefully we can collaborate with you because somehow town staff doesn't want to acknowledge the current issues that we have, that we have to face before any more building goes up. I can give you an example. Dawn Smithson, who is the representative of Call Water, she confirms in email that residents have to have BiPC, CPUC, have a requirement to provide 40 PSI to every resident. I'm sorry, we don't have that. We have 32 to 38.
Caroline, I just. Part of the time, you're over your three minutes. If you could wrap up, thank you.
I don't need to wrap up. It's time that you listen to our concerns and hopefully you will find solutions because it's inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm not seeing any, so we'll bring it back. Oh, Kristy Carley, thank you, Kristy.
Yes, excellent presentation. Thank you very much, Patty and team. I know it's a team of people. I just have one comment that we belong to the League of Cities. We pay the League of Cities and it allows us to be connected with all the cities in California. So, what can we gain from that in the ADU pamphlet process? That I assume someday we want to have this wonderful pamphlet that we hand every, you know, it lands in every mailbox of what is our process for ADUs? And get questions answered right away rather than many, many meetings. And then the laws change on top of it. So, you think your packet's all set and then new laws. So, I'm going to just throw that out there for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. All right, I will close public comment, not seeing any other hands raised. Discussion, any other comments that you guys would like to make about this? Go ahead, Craig.
I have two. Let me reiterate, I really appreciate all the work you guys put into this. I would recommend as part of your phase two that we do something to pressure test the assumptions. You know, it's easy to ask people survey and it's easy for people to go, oh, yeah, I'd be interested or not. But then actually push on them a little bit. And I worry about, you know, will they actually rent it? You know, when I was in planning commission and we were passing ADU ordinance and people were like, oh, yeah, I want to build an ADU. But you got the feeling that they weren't building an ADU for anybody to live in and they were building it to get extra space. So, I think pressure testing those assumptions and some of that's going to revolve around how we go about, like, you know, are we de restricting them for eight years or whatever? But when we have a better idea of what HCD is going to require, I think going back to some of these people and saying, okay, so, you said you're interested now, here are some further constraints now that we understand better. And then find out whether we're still getting, you know, are we getting 90% of the people who said yes casually? Are they still saying yes when there's a bigger set of constraints? So, some kind of pressure testing on that. And then the other one I'd ask is that you look at the fair housing issues. Because I think that's one thing that HCD is definitely going to be mindful of. And, you know, it's one thing to rent it and then it's a different thing to rent it to your friends. So, I think that's another piece that when you guys are doing phase two, if you can think about how to get some of that potential fair housing data for us to look at, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Nothing, Mary? Judith? Any comments you want to make?
Well, it's wonderful work. We're aware of what it does and doesn't do and I think there is room for phase two. I would fully support a phase two effort. Education, I think, is going to dovetail, I think, with some of the post-implementation work that Craig and I are envisioning in our colleagues' memo. But actually going out and being able to get more data is helpful. I'm under no illusion it's going to, people are going to be signing up to definitely do something. And I'm absolutely under no illusion that HCD is going to say, here is a checklist for how to comply with this because they're making it up as they go. So, we all have to keep our eye on that. In a way, it's almost up to us to say, how are we feeling about this data? And how are we comfortable using it? I don't think we're going to get a nice, clear path from HCD in the timeframe we need it. And that's just to say out loud, I think, what a lot of us are worried about. We all want to comply, we all want to know how to comply, we all want to avoid builder's remedy. But it's a lot of guesswork and I just want to acknowledge that in public and say, this is a group effort. We've all got to form our own view of where we all are on are we comfortable, we're making good faith, credible efforts toward compliance and a robust method? And so, phase two, to me, would help me form that view. Not that we're going to do that in the next month, but it would still, I think, inform a sunrise, for example, effort that maybe is an adjustment. So, I would definitely think it's worth it and maybe figuring out how to support the planning team and complement it. It'd complement the expert level of input from them with, you know, what 10 people can do over 280 hours is amazing. And a little bit more of that, I think, would be useful as long as they're as disciplined and focused as they seem to have been on this effort. So, those are my thoughts.
Awesome. It just, you know, as you guys have known, I think this group has worked extremely well for a whole host of reasons. The one big reason, though, is the people that were actually on this team. You know, the quality of the work product is often the result of the quality of the people. And you guys did really, every single person, from what I saw, was a super strong, dedicated, extremely thorough contributor here. So, I think that is why you guys were successful because the team was such a great, great team, number one. I think as far as next steps, you guys have already kind of tossed around some ideas for phase two. My understanding of what will happen here is you guys will meet internally. They've discussed a little bit of that with Laura already. And I assume Laura and Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, what would happen is after you guys scope out what phase two would be, my understanding is we would need to come back to council to approve that so that everybody's on board with what that scope is. I think in the meantime, those, in addition to kind of just the general results, I think what's, you know, I think, short-term, very helpful for Laura in planning is really to kind of, for help for her to think about staffing, prioritization of the key things that she wants staff to work on and those kind of things. So, I think we have a lot of actionable information for staff at this point, which is great. So, yeah, just thank you so much to you guys. And I look forward to both this work continuing and this model continuing in different ways in the community.
I have one thing. In the next phase, moving forward, I think it would be really wonderful if we can figure out a way, like a numbers way of what it would be, what would be required to incentivize this kind of contribution. So, because we're working on the Inclusionary Housing Fund and we want to get that policy set relatively soon so that we can start moving those funds along. It would be awfully nice if, you guys are so creative and can think outside of the box. If you can give some guidance to all of us about the actual, what would actually make this money go the farthest? You know, we've been tossing around things like, well, if they, you gave them a grant to build an ADU and then you tossed it, if tossed, they'd have to give the money back if they were using it for a non, and then that would grow the, that would grow the fund and then you could move it for, so that you could be creative. So, if you knew what the timeline was, so, you know, you could say 50 years, but at five years, you can buy out, you know, just give your money back. Just think creatively about what kind of questions we need to ask people that would make them feel like maybe this would work or this is something that I might sign up for.
Sure, I had one other small thing. You know, one thing that you mentioned that I meant to comment on was using the committee to act as a filter for the planning staff. I would really love to see us implement something like that. Because I think there's tons of questions that come from residents that end up going to the planning staff and it's, they're kind of answering the same questions over and over again. And I think if you guys can figure out a model, whether it's a website or whether you just say, there's an email address and we'll just answer the questions, but whatever that is, I think thinking about what that kind of committee filter, I'm putting this in air quotes, but, you know, whatever that thing is, I think that would be super powerful because, you know, we've got a small staff and they've got a ton of stuff to do. And the more the committees can help sort of share some of that load and this filtering struck me as a great example of that. So, I'd love to see more of that idea fleshed out from you guys. But overall, great, great work, thank you.
Yeah, Laura would too.
Yeah.
I agree, we agree.
Thank you, thank you, Patty and team.
So, can I ask a question? It's now 9:30. Can we do our traditional nine o'clock break?
Sure. Time for a break. Let's say, well, 9:35.
Perfect.
Resume at 9:35.
See how much it's raining.
I know.
Oh, really? Because it's going in and out.
Okay.
And we can't, like, our tech, I've been taking pictures. We ran it back and it's like, everything's perfect. I don't know why it's not working.
My.
Starting to think this place is just.
It's. The town, it's old building.
And I want, I'd like to say something right after we get, start recording again.
Sure.
We're going to go back in session. We're going to go back in session.
Is it done?
We're on.
Okay, well, coming back in session, thank you so much. Craig, you had a comment on the last item or?
Well, I know, I just wanted to make one comment that I don't know if this happens before, but we now have a majority of female council members running the town council.
Who woke up?
I know, did you?
Talking about that for.
Where I missed. Where was I?
I don't know.
Where was I? Was it recorded, was on the record?
Yeah, we can find that.
I definitely.
Really, okay, you got to, you got to show them because, yeah, clearly I was asleep. Anyway, I was just, I was. Really? Okay. You gotta, you gotta show me because yeah, clearly I was asleep. Anyway, I was just, I was, you know, taking a little break and all this. I was like, you know what?
Everybody's in the women's room.
Exactly. That is exactly what happened.
I'll send you the timestamp. All right. Moving on to item six B, an update on evacuation recommendations from the EPC.
No particular requests, recognizing you've already devoted a good deal of time to your workload this evening. Hi, I'm Vic Shaker, I'm a member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Craig is also a member of that committee and I think serves our liaison.
Technically, I'm now the liaison, no longer.
Oh, no longer liaison. I think, I'm not sure, maybe back to Jeff, I'm not sure who's, who's handling that. But in any event, my purpose is to give you a brief update because some of you, the new members may not be aware, but I know the continuing members are in October, I presented on behalf of the EPC a proposed set of rankings arising out of the emergency prepare, excuse me, the wildlife, wildlife. Coming out of the evacuation study that had been done. And you, some of you may recall, as a result of the evacuation study, there were fourteen items that were recommended. And the EPC in October presented to town council, suggested rankings, high, medium and low, and some timeframes in order hopefully to give some advice and counsel to the town council so that they would set some priorities in terms of their decision-making, hopefully, and also the utilization of the staff as to which projects were important. And given the expertise of the EPC, having worked in these issues for a number of years, the town council graciously unanimously adopted all the recommendations and authorized the town to work in coordination with us to implement a schedule these rankings so that we could use our resources in the most important areas in the most effective way. My purpose in meeting with you this evening is one, update all of you as to what we've done. And to the extent this may be new information to any of you that are listening to this presentation, at least to give you a current status of what we've done. Since that time and with the unanimous support of the town council, I went back and worked with our committee. And what we basically did is we took those fourteen topics as they were prioritized. And we identified who was responsible for leading the accomplishment of each of those fourteen items. Was it staff? Was it our committee? Was it some other resource on the outside? And then also ambitiously, more aspirationally, what might be the timeframe in which you actually expect some of these things to be done. So what I want to report to you is that we have done that. And as awkwardly as I could possibly do it, I created an Excel sheet which set all of this out, which has been presented to our subcommittee of the EPC. And at the next EPC meeting, which I think is the first Thursday of each month, so where we are in February now will be in March, this spreadsheet is going to be presented for final review by our entire committee, the subcommittee report, which involves Dale Fow and Rob Young and a few other people who have worked on this. I know we've even got some, prior, we've got some good feedback from Craig as well before his current responsibilities consumed him. And what we're going to do then is follow up on the assignments and put deadlines with respect to each of these priorities. The reason I'm providing you this rather simple report is one, to make sure that you're up to date, that we're not letting this sit. Number two, as all the rain and the cold is now putting the fire danger on the back burner for all of us and particularly all of you with the major responsibilities that are really pressing you now. I do want to keep it on the stove, so to speak, on the burns. And we are going to press forward in order to continue working on these projects, which will be a combination of staff, a combination of working with the EPC members themselves who lead some of these efforts, and then the various Woodside and Emergency Preparedness Committees that assume this responsibility. What I ask of all of you is to keep in mind, we've lost Melvin, who was going to, had been working with us, obviously he's now gone on to, he was working with Jeremy, who was leading this with Melvin as the deputy, deputy manager. He's gone on to higher responsibility in East Palo Alto. We have now, I believe it's, stand here a moment ago. We have, oh, there it is, Cory Stocker.
This is Cory right here.
Cory, I've never actually met you face to face. We spoke over, I should have recognized you. Cory is, has been impressed into voluntary service and we're working with Cory. But we recognize we have obviously limited abilities with respect to the staff is there and their many responsibilities. So we're going to have to be realistic about what we can accomplish. And we're going to call upon members of the EPC and various other members of the community from the Woodside Fire Department and various other groups that are working on this. So that's primarily what I want to accomplish on behalf of our committee and ask for your continued interest in the progress that we're making or questions that you might have. Because we are going to be coming back to you where we need, obviously the town council to act on these projects, either from budgetary or financial or a project oriented perspective. So with that, I think I've concluded my modest request. And if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them for you.
Sarah, if I can make a quick comment, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's helpful for the council or not to hear what those fourteen different projects are, just for, to continue to have them in the record. Would that be? Okay, great. Vic, do you want me to go ahead and read those?
Yes, I'll let you, I've guided, but I'd rather you do it because I think you've got a better handle than I do.
Sure, sure. Let me, let me do that for you. And I'll just mention the rankings as well. So number one is a high ranking, establish evacuation responsibilities. That's something that staff is working with the Woodside Fire Protection District on now. High priority, number two, integrate evacuation plans for schools and institutions. So that's a continuing effort. We're assisted by the Department of Emergency Management at the county. That effort's been going on for about a year. So some of those meetings are everyone getting together. Some of those are individual groups meeting with town institutions. So we've met with groups as diverse as the Sequoias, the priory, the school district, Woodside, excuse me. Oh my goodness, my brain is failing me. Nursery across the street. Windmill, thank you. Wow. And those have been very good conversations. There's more to have as they plan for their own evacuation needs and then we will integrate those. Medium priority, number three, coordinate with SAM Trans and availability of travel time for buses. So that's a medium priority. Number four, medium priority, local traffic management strategies. That's EPC is going to drive that process. High priority, number five, identify vehicle crash emergency clearance crews. So that's on town staff to follow up on what's practical there. So we're doing some work there. M six, medium, number six, investigate potential for qualified local residents to support traffic control activities. EPC is going to look into that. A high, highest priority, H plus, we'll call it H seven, create a working group which identify hazards along the major evacuation routes. So Rob Young is working on that. Town staff is working on that. We're waiting for some information from PG&E to help us both with trees and any issues related to poles that we may need to look at. Medium eight, local street accessibility improvements. So that's going to be some work with Howard. But again, that's at the medium level right now. Another H plus or very highest level, number nine, local evacuation shelters and centers where conditions for shelter in places appropriate. This is a big issue and really will depend on the fire district to assist with that because I think there's some real significant policy implications there. Number ten, another high daytime employee evacuation. So there's some work to do with contractors who do work on homes and the like, get those folks signed up on SMC Alert, et cetera. So we're going to follow up, we're following up with contractors. That's a really hard thing to do. Kind of in a vacuum, it's going to be much easier as we have new contractors coming in town and around business licenses. I think we could do something there. H eleven, high eleven, improve and coordinate communication systems. That's a EPC. Medium twelve, supplemental traffic assessments. There's no work being done on that right now. The other issues are more higher priority. Medium thirteen, multi-agency evacuation assessment. I've been, that sort of happens in the normal course of business for me. So I've had some discussions with Woodside. I had a discussion with Los Altos Hills recently. And I think next week I've got a meeting on the calendar with both the town sheriff representatives and the town of Los Altos Hills Sheriff's Representatives from Santa Clara County to discuss further coordination efforts. And then finally, but certainly not least, a high, number fourteen, evacuation education program. So Selena over Woodside Fire is going to help with that. EPC is going to help with that. Anything you want to add there, Vic? I think I got everything.
Yeah, what I do want to add is I, in my ongoing conversations with our subcommittee with Rob and Dale, it's clear that there are some other subgroups that clearly are working on some of these areas. And one of the things we're going to discuss at our next meeting is who has the primary responsibility to moving those forward so that we get a coordinated response. We don't end up duplicating the efforts, some of the really good work being done by the Woodside Fire Department, some of these other committees that are already in existence. And we're looking, of course, to the town to help us make sure we use our staff wisely, given the resources that are available, to actually get some of these things accomplished before the next fire season really comes down the pike or I suspect it's going to be early in the spring. But we really appreciate the support of the town and we appreciate the support of the town council. And I will, at some point in the future, as things develop, we'll give you an update as we go along. But we, we want you to be all aware, new council members, as well as those of you that are continuing of the efforts that we're making because we really do need your support and we're happy to answer any of the questions that you might have as we go along. Yes, Mary?
Go ahead. Is it okay? I had a question. You meant, you just passed over that you're working with other agencies in other towns. I was wondering if there was a similar effort being made in Woodside and whether you were working with them as well?
Right. So the short answer is yes. There are, we're trying to coordinate primarily, there's, you know, there's the Woodside Fire Department, as many programs that are going on, that we've got a group working there. And we are trying to coordinate with some of the other towns that have their own programs that are moving forward so that we don't necessarily duplicate those things and we don't start from scratch. For example, one of the things we put together was an effort to build our neighborhood preparedness programs. And we put together a whole handbook that we could give out to each of the neighborhoods that were willing to do so. We drew upon both the Woodside Fire Department, as well as some of the other towns that had already done this. So we didn't completely do this from scratch. So we're looking to connect as much as we can with what other town efforts are being made.
They have a lot to teach us.
They do.
There are most triangles included.
That's absolutely correct. There are definitely some areas, I mean, Portola Valley Ranch, La Dara. There are definitely some other groups within the various towns that are, really have done a good deal of work. I think there are some unique projects that we have here that will keep us well occupied.
Yeah, and maybe able to help them thereby.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. And we have been in contact with some other groups in Portola Valley. I know there's a Western group that's been formed and we've been giving some advice as we go along in some of the other areas. Meadowwood, through the other communities in town as well. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Craig?
Yeah, I got a couple. Let me, one, if you need contact information for Woodside or Los Altos Hills, like your EPC, let me know.
Okay, Los Altos Hills would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And then my question is, have you thought about how this is going to interact with the safety element? Process that's basically been going on, but is going to, you know, continue and certainly pick up some steam once the housing elements?
So we haven't, in our subcommittee, we have not given that a specific focus. However, the EPC has been coordinating with the other committees working on the housing element. And I know one of the things that recently occurred, there was a joint meeting scheduled between these various groups so that they could, they could confer with one another as to what their various needs and interests were and make sure that we're all kind of pulling in the same direction. But we as a subcommittee are not specifically focusing on the housing element because the projects that we have here will really feel, excuse me, the housing element, excuse me.
Thank you.
The housing element, right. Because we feel we can do that as we go along on each of the projects. And if there's a particular concern about that from a coordination perspective, I welcome your feedback on that as to something more that might, might need to be done.
Well, I mean, I think you just have a very specific prioritized list here. And so I think as we work on the safety element, we want to think about how this stuff gets integrated, whether it goes in the element itself or whether it goes in some auxiliary document, I'm not sure, but I think that's worth thinking about.
Good. I do too. It's an excellent suggestion. I will raise that specifically at our next EPC meeting in terms of that coordination. Sure.
Great. Any other questions?
Just a question on timing. I think I heard you say you're going to meet on the ninth of March. That's the first.
Whatever the first Thursday is.
Oh, the first Thursday. It'll be the second.
A week from this Thursday.
Okay. And then you're going to refine the plan and then do you meet again on it? Or I'm trying to see when it comes to us.
Sure. So what's going to happen at the next meeting, what I've done in this, in this chart that I've prepared, this Excel sheet is identified from our subcommittee for the entire committee, the entire EPC, who we think is responsible for which of these projects. And since the EPC members themselves are going to be asked to take some responsibility for some of these projects, together with people outside of the EPC, I want to get the buy-in from the entire committee. That's the purpose of presenting it fully with the chart at the next EPC meeting. Assuming that all moves forward smoothly, and I certainly anticipate that because this has all been coordinated through Dale Fow, obviously the, the chair of our committee and with Rob Young, who's played a very, very productive and a very important role in all of this with a good deal of background in this area. Once that's completed, then we go to the implementation stage. And some of this de facto, I will tell you, has already been implemented. That was more manageable. There were just people willing to go forward, but I do want to get the total buy-in from the committee. As to when I would come back to the town council, assuming that there's no other issue that you're going to be pushing forward that somehow affects what we're doing, I would envision that as we get closer to the beginning of the fire season, we will have a good idea of what progress we're making and what challenges we have. And I would be happy to provide you with an update as to where we are at that time, if that would be helpful to the town council.
Sure.
Glad to do that.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you again for your support. It's.
I had one more question. Sorry. I know that the, the geological, geologic safety committee has been working pretty hard on the roads that would be affected by earthquake.
Right.
And they've been working on the safety element there. And they've made their, they're going to make, it hasn't come to us yet, but it would be probably checked to make sure you're not doing exactly the same thing.
Absolutely. Yeah, because if we're, if we're going to be working on widening the roadways to have better egress and ingress.
Right.
And the geologic committee obviously has very heavy concerns in potential earthquake.
And they're, they're also covering flooding.
Okay.
And drainage issues. So
Good.
In the, in their input into the safety element. So.
I will, I will take back the idea, thank you very much, that we make sure we're coordinating with them and what they're doing. So once again, we can make one plus one equals three rather than one minus.
Three minus one.
We've got. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vic. Public comment, it looks like we have one hand raised.
Speaker is Rita. Hi, I just want to say I really, really appreciate everything that you said tonight and the hard work that your group has been putting on this. But you know, everyone in this town is waiting to have something in their hands. They have all of these plans. And we've learned that in this past big rain that everyone's talking about, you know, there were several trees that were down. We lost electricity. I mean, we lost electricity yesterday with no wifi. And so I, I hope in the plans, there's something that does not include driving and something that does not include. and something that does not include wifi, or, you know, limited access to cell phones. As Supervisor Mueller was talking about, the phones that had Verizon phones that had gone down on the coast. So we, we're going to have to have a plan B to, what are we going to do when we have no technology to help us get out of here? And, you know, and we, and we don't have a electricity to do our, our electric chainsaws, because there is no more gas-powered chainsaws to break down that tree that's blocking the road. So we, we, we've, we've got to just have a, you know, what, what can we do? So I appreciate you giving that some thought, and really appreciate the presentation and the, and the hard work of your committee. Thank you.
Can I briefly respond?
We're not supposed to go back and forth, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
I would just encourage the caller to feel free to contact us, so I can provide more comprehensive information of what we are doing.
Thank you. The next caller, I believe, is Carolyn Vertonghen. Carolyn. I think you're still muted, it looks like, Carolyn. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Victor, thank you so much for your presentation and all your hard work. As you remember, we have working, and hopefully we don't have to start that initiative again about the the planes, or the safe routes over Portola Valley regarding the, you know, the airplanes. Because that has caused several issues, but I've been working with you on that plan. I really appreciate what you presented tonight. I hope you understand, many healthcare professionals who were involved in the evacuation have refused to participate, because there's a lot of responsibility and because we have a failing healthcare system. I hope you will listen to professionals in this town and collaborate with them, because we do need to find resolutions. We don't have an evacuation route. We're still waiting to hear if the emergency was finally able to find a new place to have the radio. You know, we have these, it's, it's not a satellite, but because we have a failing internet and a failing communication issue with, with the providers, T-Mobile or whatever, the, the we have to have a radio installed at the water station, I believe that was on Tavances. And what I have found out is that the town was not able to do that and that one of your committee members was going to intervene, trying to work with Cal Waters. Because again, this is another issue, Cal Waters is one of those utility companies that have, have failed this community in Portola Valley on so many levels. So I hope you will hear our concerns. We would like to help you, we would like to bring our efforts to the table, because we really love this community and, and we really are trying to find resolutions. So thank you for all your efforts, but please reach out to the community members. And we have to find, found solutions to solve the many problems in this county, in this Portola Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I see Jeremy popping on the screen. Jeremy, did you have a, a comment to add?
Yeah, thank you, but two comments. First of all, working with Vic and Rob is amongst the greatest delights on the planet. Vic, Rob, thank you for including us in this process, it's really just been absolutely enjoyable and productive. I'd like to correct the record that, based on the last speaker. The town continues to engage with Cal Water on moving the radio equipment from a private residence to the Peak Lane Cal Water site. There are, it's taken much longer than we want, and that seems to be primarily driven by a number of staff turnovers at Cal Water. There's no indication that this project will not be moving forward. We did speak to members of the EPC who reached out on this, and they were satisfied with the answers that they received independently as it related to what we're doing. So I just want to be very clear that it's still ongoing, and we are optimistic that we will have all this completed in, in the spring. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any other discussion from council members?
Thank you.
Discussion, yes. Are we done with public comment?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so just to this point, it would be great if you added the AM radio to this list, because I think that's an important part of evacuation, is being able to notify people. And I think part of what you could help push forward, since I love the fact you've got a prioritized list here, is what's our policy for getting messages out on the AM radio? And particularly in the case of an evacuation, what's going to be, like, is Woodside Fire going to basically say, hey, town, this is, this is how we want to do it? Like, how's that information going to get on the radio so that people could use it? So I think, you know, something with this sort of, you know, the procedure around the AM radio, in addition to getting the AM radio moved up to the water tank, both of those would be good to have on this list to get finished up. Thanks.
Sure, I think, I think there's a bit of that in process, but I will certainly raise that at our next meeting as well. Because that is an important element. In fact, one of the things I will say that the, you should be aware of, the EPC is presently undertaking providing to each household stickers that they will be able to have, that will have, not only, their stickers are already available as the AM radio, but also will have their evacuation identification number for their specific residents. And that's, I think, just a tremendous improvement that's being made through the committee. And this will be something people will be able to provide in their individual residence. So when you ask them, what's your evacuation code? Instead of wondering where it is, they will, everybody, every resident of the community will have that immediately available to them. So we're looking forward to getting those distributed to the committee as well. So let me let you, yes.
Well, I just really quickly wanted just to mention a point of embarrassment for the Woodside, the Westridge community, which has happily bought all these little radios.
Right.
And we, none of us know how to use them, and none of us know how to, so we're all ready, primed with our little radios. And we're hoping some, somewhere down the priority list will be training us all how to use them.
Sure, and there are definitely resources available, both in Woodside and also in the EPC neighborhood outreach. I've worked with some of the folks in Westridge already, as you know.
Yep.
So I would be happy to assist in that regard. And I know that Selena and the others in the Woodside Fire District will be more than happy to meet on a group basis or individual basis.
That would be great.
All right, so I can, I'll be happy to facilitate that if you would like to do that. Thank you for your effort in that community.
Thank you. Anything else, guys? All right, Vic, thank you so much, really appreciate all the hard work, and definitely this update's been great. I love your suggestion of coming back. Sounds like in about sometime this
Probably two to three months.
Okay.
That sounds right.
Sounds good.
And then I hope that if there's anything more important before then, I will certainly make sure who Ali Asan will know and that we'll report it to you.
Great.
Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you.
With hard work, much appreciated.
All right, with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the review, the mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2022, 23. And Jeremy, is this going to be you and Cindy?
This will be almost entirely Cindy, and I will jump in from time to time as required and necessary. But I will say that we're really delighted to bring this mid-year budget review to you. We had planned to bring it approximately a month ago, but given the, the number of items that the council was discussing, it had been delayed, so we're happy to be here tonight. This is the first time that we've ever done this here in Portola Valley, so we certainly see it as iterative. We may not have answered all the questions you were looking for or particular information, but the discussion tonight will help us develop this process further. And I'll turn it over to Cindy Rodes, the finance director. Thanks.
Hello, good evening, mayor, council members of the public. My name is Cindy Rodes, finance director with the town. Tonight, we are here to review the current fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget and year-to-date actuals of significant sources and requirements. In our presentation tonight, we will be looking over the revenues and expenditures, also discussing the reserve levels. And then at the end, I will open it up for any questions and comments. Our current fiscal year general fund revenues and expenditures, at a glance in this view, the chart reflects the budget over actuals for fiscal year 2020, 2021, 2021, 2022, and the current fiscal year 2022, 2023. Budget numbers are identified by the shaded bars, while the actuals are identified by solids. As you may see from our actuals, generally, revenues are higher than expenditures, with the exception of fiscal year 2021. This was primarily due to the increased expenditures during COVID. The town has received federal funds under the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, to help offset these costs in future years through 2026. We will be preparing and completing the next report for ARPA, and that would be coming up at the end of April 2023. For our fiscal year, current fiscal year general fund revenues, overall, the town is on track in regards to revenue sources. The major sources of revenue for the town are property tax. Typically, under property tax, that line item, we also identify the LF, which is the vehicle license fee, and ERAF, which is the Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, as well as franchise fees, sales and use tax, and utility user tax. Historically, we have budgeted quite conservatively in property taxes, generally under five percent. Due to this, we have realized more general fund revenue than expected. For the current fiscal year, property taxes are at sixty-four percent of budget. In previous years, the vehicle license fee, or VLF, was captured under the property tax secured line item. These two sources of funding for VLF include the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or ERAF monies, that non-basic aid school districts are entitled to receive. And then, if needed, the property tax revenues of non-basic aid school districts also are included. Any monies from the non-basic aid school districts that are used for this purpose are backfilled by the state. In recent years, this funding source has become uncertain due to the funding shortfall. And most recently, the state not including the shortfall in their proposed fiscal year 2023, 24 budget. We have budgeted conservatively under this line item due to the uncertainty. Fortunately, we have actualized more revenue than projected, which has contributed to the higher actualized revenue. Please note that revenue such as franchise fees are received on an annual basis, typically in the final quarter of the fiscal year. We expect to receive the additional revenue from cable and energy services at that time. Another general fund revenue source to note is charges for services and licenses and permits. The town has actualized higher revenue than in the past due to actively reviewing and adjusting the fee schedule by the Consumer Price Index to help combat, combat rising inflation and increased costs for consultant services. Currently, revenue is just under thirty-three percent of budget. We expect to act, actualize additional revenue in the third and fourth quarters of this fiscal year. This revenue will help to offset increased expenditures for consultant work. I do want to point out the actuals line for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And there we could see that the actuals surpassed, exceeded the, the budgeted item. And that, again, was primarily due to the capturing those additional revenue sources. And we expect to, to see the same goals this year.
I think it's worth noting, if I can just step in for a quick second, Cindy, that, you know, the revenue comes in, if Cindy was pointing out with franchise fees, these, these things tend to come in, they can come in lumpy, they can come in at odd times. And, you know, tonight, if staff saw something in our actuals that caused us concern, as it related to when we think certain revenues are going to be realized, we'd be pointing that out. So, you know, in the previous slide, it showed, I'm sure a question would be, well, shouldn't it be about half or something like that? And that's not necessarily the case in any one of these revenue sources, just given the way monies come in. And Cindy can speak to any specifics on that. Thanks.
Um, we are heading into our expenditures for the current fiscal year. Significant expenditures expected this fiscal year are miscellaneous consultants, the fuel mitigation program administered by the Woodside Fire Protection District, as well as continuing costs for public safety. The following visuals reflect budget versus actuals over the recent years for miscellaneous consultants and public safety, including the fuel mitigation program by the Woodside Fire Protection District. In this view here, we have the miscellaneous consultants line item. Again, I do want to point out the increased budgeted numbers for this particular line item. Again, this is due to the increased services for consultant work. And overall, we can see the definite increase. And we, we will be capturing some of this, these expenditures under some of the revenue that is, will be received from the building and planning department. We also expect to have some grants to offset these costs. We have not yet received them, or actually, actualized those grants, but we do expect to receive them to help offset these costs as well.
On the grant front, if folks remember, there, there were two grants associated with the housing element, that if you applied, you got. And we've applied, we haven't actually received the funds, as Cindy was saying, but I believe that that's in the order of $245,000. That's a pretty significant amount of revenue that we're going to bring in that helps here. Thank you.
In this view here, we have our expenditures under public safety. Again, some of these expenditures here are paid just through January, so that's what we're capturing in this view. We expect to meet the budgeted number under these expenditures. We've recently just received, so I, I just want to point out that the year-to-date actual for the current fiscal year reflects zero under the expenditures for the fuel mitigation program. We just recently received about a week, a week and a half ago, a, an invoice from Woodside Fire for services rendered through the end of January. So that, that, that will definitely jump under the, the next billing cycle. So the, that invoice is just under $106,000 for those services. So we will definitely be actualizing those expenditures in the future. A little bit on our reserves, as a small town with the historical precedence and risk of na, local natural disasters, including landsides, earthquake. and risk of local natural disasters, including landsides, earthquake, and wildfires, with a less diversified tax base, it is fiscally prudent for Portola Valley to maintain a minimum unrestricted and spendable fund balance within the general fund at a higher level. It is therefore recommended that the town maintain a minimum of 60% of its annual budgeted operating expenditures within the general fund's unrestricted fund balance. This amount is to be calculated annually via the adopted budget. The current fiscal year general fund reserve recommendation is just over 4.5 million. Our current general fund unrestricted fund balance is just under the 4.3 million mark or at 57%, which is just under the recommended 60%. This is not expected to trend for future years. This is mainly due to increased expenditures for consultant work related to the housing and safety elements, SEQA, and zoning and code amendments. At this time, I will open it up for any questions and comments.
Anybody? Thank you so much, Cindy, first and foremost. Who would like to go first with questions?
Well, I could start, since I'm at the end. I have all the dumb questions. What, what, what hard, what is the new software that we're using that is making these lovely graphs and so forth?
That is our OpenGov. So we have, we have multiple systems that we use. Yes, it's OpenGov. So part of the charts and graphs that are produced are through the budgeting and reporting tools available through OpenGov, as well as migrating the data from our financial system, which is also OpenGov.
And then my second question was, what, what was that grant, that $253,000 grant for?
I can answer that, Mary, through the chair. The, that grant is, it was two parts. I'm forgetting the names of them, but I think one was SB1, and there was another one. They were both made available through the state for cities working on their housing element. As I, as I mentioned, both of those, they were not competitive grants. If you applied, you were qualified to receive the funds. So we did do that. We actually cleaned up some paperwork, if you recall, early this year, that the state had contacted us, saying that we hadn't crossed a T somewhere. So we went ahead and did that, but it's 245, I think it is.
And have we been reimbursed for the expenses from Stanford?
Reimbursed for the expenses for
Yeah, the things that they were theoretically, that were being paid for in our staff.
So anything related to the Portola Terrace or Stanford Wedge project that has a relationship to particularly the environmental work, that is all reimbursed by Stanford. There are no issues.
And it has been reimbursed?
Stanford pays for all of these things. Yes, there's no issue.
You just sent them a bill.
Complicated than that, but that's basically it.
It doesn't affect its budget. I'm trying to find where it is in the budget.
No, no, it's a pass through.
Doesn't, it doesn't show as an increase or a decrease. Okay. That's my, that's my questions.
Thank you.
Craig or Judith?
I'm good. I have some comments, but no more questions.
So we're 3% under the recommended reserve. Is there any, how do you see that playing out until the end of the year?
I, we, we're, we believe it's actually going to be a little bit better. We, amongst other things, as Cindy was alluding to, this, this question on the VLF, we didn't budget it, and we've actually realized a pretty significant amount of money. Cindy, if you've got that offhand, let me know. So we're actually likely to see, well, first, a reduction in what the deficit is for, for the year, because there have not been but a handful of new approved budgetary expenditures from the council that haven't been reflected in a budget amendment yet. Certainly, that those expenditures will bring it down a little bit. The real, like, I think the issue is next year, when we program in what we expect the fund balances to be for these various accounts, including the unrestricted fund, to make sure that we get it back up to 60% at least.
And the last question is, is that in the range of what you've gone under in the past? Any historical perspective on that 3%?
You know, since I've been here, I'm not aware that we've gone under it. I'd have to go back and look a little further. I believe it's happened, it happened before I came here at least once. And that's a, Cindy was alluding to, that, that can happen in any given year, given some significant expenditures. So the last year, in this fiscal cycle, identifying the hundreds, thousands of dollars we needed to spend on the housing element.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a note to Jeremy's point on the VLF. We budgeted this fiscal year 482,000, and to date, we have received 652,000.
Judith asked one of, one of my questions, so thank you for that. My next question was really Cindy for you, given that, you know, this is the first time doing a mid-year budget review and kind of a year now into this new platform. If you could just share your thoughts on, you know, the tool in general and the process of this mid-year update. I know there was some reluctance because, as Jeremy described, you know, the concerns about the lumpiness of how revenue and expenses come in. So I'm just kind of curious for your thoughts again on, on both the tool and this mid-year process.
We will be, we're going to be very candid with you about this. So Cindy, go for it.
Um, well, to your first, well, to one question in relation to producing the mid-year. I actually really enjoy producing these, just kind of at a glance, and looking at the analysis year over year and identifying trends and being able to forecast for future budget years. So this process is new. The, the difficult and challenging part of this is, is definitely the resources. So our, our most valuable resources is time. We don't have sufficient staff to really manage and, and identify all of these on a regular basis. So it does take quite some time to get this project going. But it is one that I would say that it's important to continue for, for future budgetary cycles. As far as the tool goes, the tool, I really enjoy also putting it together. There are some definite challenges as well. We were one of the early adopters for OpenGov. So it is a, a platform and a system that is developing and growing. They are constantly coming up with new enhancements and changes, which are great, but sometimes can create additional challenges with some data integration and really having a smooth process between systems. So there is a lot of manual work that goes to produce what we were just actually looking at. So I do expect that in future years, as OpenGov continues to make these enhancements and streamline their processes, that it will become a much easier and, again, streamlined process for us internally as well.
Thank you. Jeremy, it sounds like you, did you also have something to add there?
I, I would, I mean, just maybe building a little off it. Given that we were early adopters, you know, we did expect some wrinkles. So you know full well, back a couple of years ago, some of the things that we were going through to just get the system operating, even with a system that has components that we would expect to be fully integrated. You know, sometimes we do need to move information between two modules in, in OpenGov. I am sure our friends at OpenGov are tired of the help tickets that we put in from time to time, or maybe a little bit more. You know, I, my candid assessment is that it's a great software, and they're moving very fast. And there are still elements of it to be sussed out in the future. So we're happy to help them identify need, particularly need in a smaller community. They've been very gracious with us in, in, in hearing that feedback. When there's issues, they're available. And I think the point we wanted to make tonight, off your question that you asked it, is that, you know, there's still a lot of time that we do spend doing some pretty basic manual labor in these systems that we're hoping would make it a little bit easier. It's going to get better over time for sure, because it's a great product, but we're not quite there yet.
Um, another question is, Cindy, sorry, do you have something to add there?
I, I just wanted to, just to Jeremy's point, OpenGov is very responsive. They do respond really quickly to our trouble tickets, any questions that we have. I have a regular monthly meeting with other members of staff. Also, we meet regularly with OpenGov on a monthly basis to discuss some of these kind of different quirks or suggestions that we have. And they, they definitely take those suggestions and help us to kind of find either workarounds or they let us know if it's on their roadmap, project roadmap of upcoming enhancements as well. So they do provide us with timelines and general support, a lot of information. So they have been helpful throughout this process.
And then, just to kind of summarize, to make sure I'm hearing correctly, as far as the, doing the mid-year review, given this was the first time doing it, it was time-intensive because it was the first time, but it's something you feel is worthwhile internally. I mean, it's certainly worthwhile to us on the, on the council, but you feel worthwhile internally, and hopefully the growing pains will diminish over time. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Other question I had is, any updates on the CPo grant?
That's at my end, Cindy, I can take that through the chair. The CPo grant is actually administered through Woodside Fire Protection District. We're along with the town of Woodside and the county, sort of sub, subs to that grant. It is a resource grant, it is not a money grant. So the resource that is made available is primarily through Woodside Fire to them. There are obviously a few things that we've worked on with, with the Woodside Fire Protection District and CPo. So things like review of safety element issues. Home hardening, round two, we utilized that resource grant through Woodside Fire. And a pilot program that happened up in the Highlands recently was, was born out of discussions with the principals from CPo when they visited town about a year ago. So that's the status right now. It's ongoing. We're not anticipating the resource grant to finish, because there's still plenty of work to do at Woodside Fire. But that's where we're at now.
All right. One last question, then, Craig, I know you have more. As far as the deficit, and I, and I'll use my crystal ball expression again. I know you don't have one, but based on, you know, what you see right now, you know, it seems like in my last two years of doing this, we've made up the deficit over time by year end, and certainly after the close of the books, as, you know, things settle out. Do you see that trend happening right now? Or is this significantly different because the expenses are significantly different, given the housing element and the safety element? And I know attorney's fees are much higher than they've been in the past as well.
Yeah, there, it is different. I mean, this is a unique situation that we're in related to the housing element and that process. So it requires some additional resources, which is why we're in the operational deficit. The town, for most of the time that I've been here, has run a deficit beyond operational. So when we include capital, that's been a pretty normal thing. So we spend a little bit out of reserves to do some capital. But to your point, because we've been pretty thoughtful in the budgeting at both sides of the ledger, we do tend to realize some additional revenue at the end of the year. We want to be conservative. We think that makes a lot of sense. This year, I would not expect the deficit to, operationally to reduce, based on what Cindy's provided to you tonight, to the extent that we don't have one. I would not anticipate bringing a budget forward to the council next year that did either unless the council was directing staff to, you know, all things being equal, some additional major expenditures around a general plan update or something of that ilk, or the safety element, if it needs to be supported in that way. So I would expect us to end the year with, with a, a lesser, but an operational deficit per the budget.
Thank you. Craig, did you have a follow-up?
Questions? No.
No, okay. Um, public comment? Nobody in the schoolhouse, so just one hand up. Rita? Thank you.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment slash question. With the, the audit, the delayed audit, the 2019, 2021, that just was submitted and finished, it talks about in there, in the management letter and throughout the audit, about the software, the changes in the software. And so that's how long, and I remember when the software was changed over, and it was talked about how that new software, of course, it was going to make everyone's teeth straight and their hair perfect, it was also going to acknowledge where the different buckets were, you know, coding for different projects and whatnot. And, and that was promised at that time, and you can probably look back in the minutes. I sent a, a letter, email earlier today to the two liaisons of the finance committee, and also to the finance committee, and just asking them, why isn't this, you know, happening? We, we're, seems like we're pulling from reserves. We were still missing a couple of audits. It would be a whole lot simpler if it was, you know, we use something like, you know, FAS 86 or, or something to account to. How can it be 100 and, what, $140,000 for miscellaneous consultants? What are these consultants actually doing in these different buckets? Are they working on the safety element? Are they, you know, sweeping the front of the building? You know, there's different consultants. Are they all attorneys? It would be really nice, and even when, at the end of the housing element, the safety element, how much did that actually cost us? And the only way you're going to be able to see those amounts, that the public can see those amounts, is about having some kind of coding and, and accountability with that coding for all of these different items and all of these different buckets. You know, I appreciate the work that's been done and the, you know, the nice little graphs, but it's, it's not really showing what the money is being spent on. What categories, you know, are we moving forward? How much money? I would love to know, how much money have we spent on the housing element to date? It seems like, you know, from the warrant list, there's a couple of hundred thousand dollars in this, in this month's, in, in tonight's paperwork. There's $49,000 for open.gov. But is this a software we need to push off to the side? If it's not been working for us for several years, and here it is, the end of February, I don't hear anything about the other two audits that are pending, or the year-end financials for those. And it's hard for me to understand, how are we working on a current budget when we haven't taken care of the paperwork that needs to be done? And is there an update right now about the two outstanding budgets, outstanding audits and year-end financials? Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next caller, I believe, is Carolyn Vertonghen.
Thank you. This is following Rita's comments. In 2019, we were promised that this new system was going to show transparency, was going to eliminate jobs, was going to be saving money for Portola Valley, and we only see the contrary, the grants. I mean, it's, it's a very complex issue. I hope the new town council is really reviewing. I hope you will investigate what the town has been promised or what staff has promised town council in their proposals. And like Rita said, at, at one point, you have to evaluate if the And like Rita said, at, at one point you have to evaluate if the, the new, um, software that we implemented was really worth it. If you have QuickBooks, you can, I mean, for instance, I have asked town, town staff, you know, how much do we spend on all these joint powers and all these agencies? And they cannot produce the list. Using a QuickBooks report, you could easily do that. So there's so many questions, there's so many questions about the grants. Um, and we continue to get conflicting answers. It's really not what Portola Valley stands for. And prior to 2015, I don't see there was any issue with the budget. Uh, we had financial reporting. It was all clear to us. It was not sophisticated, but it was all fine. So I hope town council would spend some money, uh, some time and, and really ask town staff to come up with answers that make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right. I don't see any. Is that another, is that a new hand that just went up?
No.
Okay. Um, don't see any other hands up, so I'll bring it back for discussion. Craig, did you have something you wanted to start with?
Uh, sure. Um, so first of all, I just want to say thank you. I, I think doing this mid-year check-in is awesome. So I think it's totally worth the effort that you put into it. Um, and I'm hoping that, you know, we're gonna sort of get some refinements on this process. And, and then going forward each year, hopefully it's going to be a little bit simpler than it was doing it the first time. You know, generally when I looked at it, like the three-year comparison stuff, I, I found to be, you know, very helpful. One comment I'd make, um, and I make this to my fellow council members that may or may not have figured this out. It took me a while to figure it out, um, that almost all the, the, um, graphs and stuff in this report, since it's a website, if you click into them, lets you get to a tremendous amount of detail. So if you just read the report as if it were a printed piece of paper, um, you wouldn't really get the information that's buried in the, the sort of webpages. Um, so I found it both very helpful, but it was also a little daunting to figure out, you know, kind of which details to look at. So I think, you know, when we look at this stuff in the future, I, I think we're going to want to think about a little bit like what we surface on that front page. You know, like the three-year comparisons were great and some of the expenses and revenue stuff. I think there's probably stuff that we could do to make stuff on the, that sort of front page a little bit more accessible. But generally I was, I was pretty happy with that stuff. There were things like, you know, we're, we're looking at one and a half, roughly one and a half million dollar increase in our overall budget over the last three years. Um, and I was, you know, is that something we're going to continue to see into the next year and the next year? And, and I, looking at the report, I, that was something I couldn't get a sense for. How much of this stuff is like our budget's just grown and grown and grown? And how much of it is some pretty exceptional stuff? And to that end, um, I think I concur with some of the public comments, which it would be really nice to see how much we're spending on what I think of as unfunded mandates. And obviously we're going to have to define exactly what we mean by an unfunded mandate. But, you know, certainly all the money that we put into the planners and stuff for the housing element. You know, after we get through and get it approved, we don't anticipate next year that we're going to pay that same kind of money again. And that would help me understand whether this sort of continually increasing budget is going to then start to drop back off, you know, because we started at roughly eight and a half million. And now we're at like 12 million. And I guess what I'm curious is a couple of years from now, are we going to be back to nine million? Or are we going to be at 15 million? That may be exaggerating a little bit, but, but you get the idea. So I, I found I couldn't easily see that from this, the information. So as you guys think about how to revise this, that would be helpful to me to, to sort of be able to project this out and understand, you know, which stuff is near-term or on a short term, maybe not quite the right word, but is, is stuff that's happening for, for special events that are like this year and like the housing element would be one of those examples versus things that are ongoing and we can expect just to see more of the same. Excuse me. The other thing I saw is I've, I found it pretty confusing, the budget versus actual stuff. Cause as far as I could tell, the budget was for a whole year, but the actuals for half a year. Um, and a lot of times what I've seen in budgets, um, is that you end up with the budget column for a whole year and for the actuals, you end up with the actuals. And then stacked on top of it, you end up with the budget for the rest of the year. So that you can kind of compare the two columns. Cause that is, as it is now, like the actual column was always roughly half, but it, it wasn't a very interesting comparison, right? I, I couldn't really make a lot of sense out of it. Whereas if it were stacked with the rest of the, the budgeted stuff for the rest of the year, then actuals to date plus budget stuff would be a lot more useful for me to do kind of column to column comparisons. And then the last thing I'd say is in going through this, um, and, and you know, this may be what we do when we review the budget at the end of the year, but I would say almost anything that has a 10% variance, year to year or between, you know, our expenses, you know, what we budgeted versus our actuals. I, I'd like some kind of explanation. I mean, below 10%, I'm kind of willing to say it's some combination of inflation and there's some amount of noise in the system. But at some point, there's a bunch of these things that some of them are like, you know, it's 90,000 and then it's like 17,000. I mean, there's some pretty big deltas and, and I just couldn't really understand what they were. So maybe trying to think about how to make that information a little more, um, available would be helpful. So I think those are my basic comments. I mean, o- overall, I totally appreciate being able to do mid-year check-in. I, I think it's great and I think we can do a lot. And I think we probably can do a lot with this software so that it's stuff that, you know, you Cindy and the finance department don't have to be manually doing this stuff, but that we can get it on that page. And then as council people, we can sort of drill down through the various, um, pages to get the information we need. So that's it. Thanks.
Thanks Craig.
About this, um, I, I was aware that we could drill into this, but I didn't get down to a, a level that was really extremely helpful for me, like what, what are these expenses? Who, who, who are we then? And what was this project, this relief project? Were, were there and that maybe just I need to be taught more about, about how to use this software. But it also, I think I, I reflect on some of the, the, the comment, public comments. And I think that, that there were probably some, uh, truth in the idea that the warrant list, for example, it may, if it's a, certainly if it's a whole lot of trouble, that's not so great. And, but it certainly needs to have the granularity going into this budget. So that we actually, when it comes out like this, it needs to have categories that are meaningful to us. So I, I don't, I mean, it, we maybe don't want to put all the time into the warrant list. And what you really want to know is where are these numbers going and what, what are they for? So that was what, the basically looking at what the granularity is and whether we can get all the way down to, like what project was this, where these costs attributed to. And then the other thing that I got from Cal Cities and I, it's not, is not in no way a suggestion. And I know it's going to be immediately, um, very unpopular. But, uh, they suggested that we have a five-year, uh, budget cycle instead of a three-year. And, uh, just wanted to put it out there as we're looking at things. And if it's just as easy as moving a little line down the way so that you can have five years on the screen, that, that would be awesome. But if that, if this is going to be something where this software is not going to allow us to do that, that'll be frustrating. I think those are my questions.
So Mary, can I just ask a clarifying question? When you say five years, are you saying five years in the arrears? Or are you saying that we should be budgeting five years forward?
Well, that's a good question, but it's, it's a huge difference. And I don't totally understand what they're meaning, what, how it would play out with our finance group. But that we have a look at, at the five-year horizon. Yeah, I think it's five years horizon.
This is Jeremy through the chair.
About this Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'd love to talk to you more, Mary. I'm unfamiliar with the budgetary process at the government level beyond two years. Some cities have started to implement two-year budgets, so they, they have that. And in the second year, they do a check-in. So some communities are, are doing that. Most cities still do a single-year budget. You might, you certainly are doing five-year capital improvement programs and things of that nature. But I'd love to talk to you more to hear more about that.
Yes, I think I got it wrong. And for full disclosure, I would say, uh, it was, it was the working off of a two-year budget as opposed to a one-year, because we're working off a one-year budget now. And I was seeing the three years that you're showing. Is that right?
Yeah, we were showing, uh, we were showing you a couple of years of actuals and then the budget.
You were both correcting, uh, and correcting me. So I apologize, but it helped me.
Well, and it may be what you were thinking of was three years historical and two years forward.
Thank you. That's very.
That could be five years, you know, we could.
Okay, let's call it five, yeah. The organization I work with uses a five-year rolling average for everything. So, uh, I'm, I'm quite used to saying five. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Through the, uh, through the chair, I, I, you know, like there's been a conversation, a little bit of a conversation about the warrant list and providing additional information. Happy to take some guidance from, uh, the council, but I, I did want to show something. If this was useful. So our previous warrant list was under a different software. And I wanted to show you the detail that was there and the, this is a functionality issue. So I don't, I don't know what we can and can't share, but one of the things I wanted to show you here was that, that the detail, the information that, um, has been discussed tonight, wasn't available on this previous warrant list either. It's not, that, that's not the case, um, with these new processes that we have in place. Particularly the, the, what we really want to implement is some of the transparency portal stuff. But I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that our previous warrant list didn't have that particular information either. So this is just an example from 2019. Cindy, I don't know if you have anything to say to that, but I, I just wanted to point that out that there, the, the new warrant list or relatively new warrant list doesn't have, we, there is an information that was taken away that would make it a little more legible, if you will.
Correct. Um, and then just an, an additional note to that, um, the, the reports that are available that are generated from the warrant list, um, we, we've added that additional layer. So there, um, typically it's just that, uh, check register that's produced. But if you also look at the additional documents, there is another report that does break down and give a little, does provide more detail rather than just, uh, the vendor name and the amount. So, um, if there is any additional information that, um, you would like for us to display in the report, um, again, as I mentioned, um, we have continuous, um, meetings with Open Gov and, um, we are working on, um, other enhancements. So there's always a room for, um, additional improvements on, on the reporting features as well. I did want to make one other note, um, specific to the prior year, um, data. With the implementation and integration into the new, uh, Open Gov system, one of the changes that was also, uh, made was the, um, conversion of our chart of accounts, um, to a more, uh, robust, um, numbering system. Um, so the, that integration, uh, with the, the charter of accounts, I do, um, also agree that it would be very helpful to go a little bit further back, um, in time. But again, um, as I mentioned, the, the, um, process is very manual. So to get those prior year actuals for, uh, for example, 17, 18, 18, 19 and 19, 20, uh, those years would need to be converted to our new chart of accounts following this system integration. So we can definitely produce that. It would just take some more time, um, to include that, those, um, uh, that data in these reports.
I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think we were suggesting the going back five years. I think it was more the three and then maybe two going forward. So, so don't, yeah, don't wrap up on the five. I already didn't mean that. Do the warrant lists have the accounts on them? Cause I mean, all the reports that we saw, you know, the Open Gov reports, they're all based on an account and the accounts have numbers. Does the warrant list, is there any way to get the account numbers on the warrant list? Cause that at least tie that stuff to an account.
Um, I can work, I can look through the Open Gov, um, different reporting features and see if there's an additional report based on my review from, um, the past reports and, and trying to get something comparable. I, I didn't have anything available, but I, as I mentioned, there are constant enhancements and changes to, um, the Open Gov system. So there may be, um, a new report out there that, uh, we can generate that would include, um, accounts. Um, but I don't, I don't have that information available right now.
And how, how often does Open Gov get updated? I mean, just on a annual or is it?
Oh no, they, they're doing updates all the time.
All the time. Yeah, all the time. Um, there's updates, uh, there's, they're actually producing a project enhancement roadmap. Um, so I can, I can get that and we can, um, I can provide that to, to you, but there's, um, on a regular basis, um, there's, there's enhancements on a, um, continuous basis as we're looking at the system. There could be changes in the, the way that the platform functions, um, new features, new buttons, new, um, reporting capabilities. Um, so it's, it's constantly evolving and changing.
Yeah. Yeah. So I was actually asking about our data, like how often could I look at the Open Gov stuff and see the latest information? Like, could I look at it next month and get the, you know, midterm plus one set of data?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'll let me, I can take this into, yes. So one of the, one of the, so one of the pieces that's been missing, um, that we haven't implemented yet, which I think has been spoken to, um, previously is the transparency piece. And, uh, it's, it's important. I don't want anyone to think that it's not important because it hasn't been done yet. But, uh, you know, we're, we are where we are. Once that's done, anybody can go into the system and start clicking on, on various things. So we, we have to make that live. We have to get into a particular rhythm, I think in the finance department to ensure that all the data is completely up to date. Anytime anybody's going to look, you know, not a couple, you know, not two weeks behind or something like that, that's happened in the past. So we're working on that. But that's the goal here. That's one of the beauties of Open Gov is that anyone can go in and see where things are on a, on a, basically a live basis. But we haven't gotten to a point yet where we, we've been able to turn that all on. But we're, we're closer than we've been, um, on that.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
So I'm still getting my bearings on the software and what it's capable of, and that will take me some time. So this is a very useful introduction. And I'm not sure if it's practical, but I do think having some breakdowns of housing element related expenses, for example, and the grant coming in and, and just understanding that might help me going forward be, uh, to understand the overall budget because those are cyclical. Hopefully this is a big one and the next eight-year cycle will be different. But, uh, at some point I'm probably going to want to see something that's more informative on those categories. And then for the warrant lists, I don't want to create work for the sake of it, um, relative to everything else. All I'm really drilling down on are both housing element related expenses to understand them. And then what I'd call material amounts, um, what are these for? Were they coming? So as you go through your updates and, you know, uh, continue to gain expertise and experience, I'd be interested in seeing if there are practical ways of, of getting that level of, of information or broken out, maybe not in a normal budgeting cycle, but at some point. And I know it's a work in process, so I'd look to you for what's reasonable.
You know, everything you just said is very reasonable. Um, the, the, the beauty of Open Gov is that there's a term of art that I'm going to screw up here, but essentially you tag particular budget units and then you can create new reports. So that, that is not an issue. It is worth noting that, um, capturing the full cost of something like a housing element update is challenging because what we're not estimate, which we can, um, this will take some time, but the. This will take some time, but the the cost, the time that staff is spending on that, right? That's not an obvious place, we would, you know, make a good estimate of what that looked like over a period of time. I've not required staff to track that, I mean, I'm not asking Laura to track those kinds of things. So that is whatever number would show from consultants, whether it's UPP or some of the sub consultants. It's going to not have that part. So as long as people understand that, producing those those reports, once we know which items we want to include is is relatively easy to do. And so we'll, we'll get something, Cindy and I will talk tomorrow and we'll put something together.
Thank you.
Great.
I have a quick follow up about the tags because I know we had talked about the notion of tags, whatever the software calls it. When we launched this, particularly as it related to tracking anything having to do with wildfire management, just because there, all of the different costs were across a whole different, you know, various departments. Have you guys been able to evolve that? Are you using the tags at all? If so, in which kind of categories, how are you using them so far? And are you finding them to be applicable in the ways that we had hoped it would be, like, is it effective?
Fire is certainly the most effective place because of the way it was distributed across the budget. There aren't other, Cindy, unless there's ones that you're internally tracking within finance, there aren't ones that I've asked staff to put together because they're having, that tonight it's good to get the direction on the housing element, so that that's a useful one. But there aren't other ones that we've started to use. Our budgets, you know, for for those of us who are in it all the time, it's it's small enough where, you know, we can, we can navigate some of those things without setting that up. I don't know, Cindy, if you have anything to add to that.
So we have begun to use what, what, so what we actually call them are project codes. So the project codes that we have identified and set up are primarily used for the capital improvement project and those expenditures. But we can definitely identify some new project codes as well to track some of these other significant expenditures.
Thank you.
I had one more question.
One more? Go for it.
Or a discussion item. In regard to the audit question, is, is this software helping with the audit solution, the solution of the audit issues? Is it going, is it, or is it part of the problem? Are we, how, how's the historic, how historically has it helped? Or have we even gotten to OpenGov yet with our audits?
Oh, yeah, now we, we use it for nineteen, twenty, we're using it to build that twenty, twenty one as we speak. You know, I would say generally it's been useful. There are still some growing pains related to some of the reporting and the like. Cindy, you can probably add to that, but I mean, overall, I think it's been okay.
That's good, that's encouraging.
Yeah. Well, thank you, everybody, appreciate this.
Thank you again so much, Cindy and to your team as well.
Thanks, Cindy.
All right, I think that concludes that, the regular agenda items. And we are moving on to colleagues memo, which this is the founder's award. And I, I guess in retrospect, I didn't intend this to be an extension of the colleagues memo. In retrospect, we should have just put it as an agenda item. But really what we have tonight is a nomination of Sue Crane by Nancy Lund with three supporting letters per the process that we all agreed to a couple of weeks ago. One from Annalee Trapp, one from, I'm forgetting them all of a sudden. One from John Richards and one from Chrissy Fleming. Yes, and so tonight would be just to decide on moving forward with that nomination based on the criteria. And then assuming there's agreement there, we would present the award at a future meeting. So that's kind of a summary of where things stand. I think the experience of the nominee is outlined in great detail in Nancy Lund's letter. And yes, any, any questions, I guess we can start with that.
I just have a process question, more than anything. We have a copy of the founder's award memo here. I'm not sure this has been updated because at one point I thought we were saying not more than four per year. So A, is there a need to update this memo or to create more of a checklist? Like, have we gotten the following things and, you know, how is it going to work?
I mean, per my initial comments, in retrospect, I think the header, the, yeah, I, we could have had a cover letter here saying, instead of the colleagues memo repeating, so agreed, I think, going forward, a different format for that.
And then she, just for the process, for the public, we've gotten the nominations and we've notified her. And, and now it's for the council discussion.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, I mean, do we have a defined set of criteria for the founders board? Because this doesn't seem like it's quite it. I mean, that's what I'm hearing Judith comment on is we had modified what's here. Is there a place where this is now, and this is where it gets back to if the minutes were clear or something? I mean, do we have a place where we've approved exactly what it means to qualify for the founder's award? Because now we're going on to actually basically vote for somebody. And it, I mean, Sue's going to be a great candidate, so this is starting to feel like the in lieu inclusionary housing fund thing where we're kind of being asked to vote on something where we haven't decided exactly what the process is. So I'm not trying to derail this.
No, 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 I don't think you are. So, so let's talk about that because I thought we had agreed on the process. I think what we have now currently, this is a colleagues memo format, which should not have been the format for tonight. What is, we did approve it at the last meeting with the amendment about the up to for a year. That was approved at that meeting. It was posted, it was announced in the weekly newsletter. It was posted on the town website, it's currently live, right there, right there. That describes the process, which is one nomination letter, a minimum of three supporting letters. And that then it would go to the subcommittee, which is Judith and I in this current organization and then to the council.
Okay, so again, just because I, I sort of like you, sir, I'm kind of a process guy here. I mean, could we just do this at the next meeting with the right process that says, here's the checklist and the subcommittee has checked off all the boxes, this qualifies, here's the background information. The council should vote, this, this just feels to me like it's the wrong process, even though the right we'll get, we can get to the right results. So is there any reason we can't put this off one meeting and just clean it up so that then we do it the same way every time?
I hear that you want something more of a form, it sounds like, that where, where things are checked off. And I'm more than happy to create that. I would ask if you'd be open to considering because we have done that. I just don't have it documented, I think, in the way that you would have expected. I'm more than happy to read through all of the items in her background that qualify her. And I'm wondering, I'm asking for tonight, just so we don't delay things, is if we could agree to this tonight for this one and improve the process per your request for the next time.
I guess I don't see the urgency, I would actually like to see us get the process right. Because I mean, let's say we don't get another one for another six months. By that point, we're going to have forgotten that, oh, we'll look back at this and go, oh, this, what's going on? Why don't we just do it for the next time? I don't think what I'm asking is hard, I think you're going to just take your colleagues memo and say the subcommittee met. We basically acknowledged that all the things, all the criteria was met. Here's the background information and then it's on as a regular agenda, not as a colleagues memo. And then when we look back at the minutes, we'll be able to go, look, this is how we approved the first one and we did it right.
I hear you and I've stated my position, I'm happy to be overruled, we have a democracy here, so.
I think in the, first of all, this is not, this is, this is not the most sober topic we have to cover today. And I think it's well done and it showed that the system works. And I'd say it's a huge success and you should be rewarded with the efficiency of going ahead and having your candidate, the candidate, this candidate, complete their process. And then we could put on the consent agenda next time, the format of this, so that we don't have to come back and talk about it again. I just think we're loading our, our, our agenda too much with something that should go very quickly and gratefully. And everybody should be smiling at the end of this and, and we should be saying, well done to Sue and to Sarah too.
What I'm not clear on is if you think the proposed criteria, if you're trying to get to another level, or if you just want assurance of compliance with all of the steps, like it would depend on what you think is missing.
Yes, no, I, I think that if we took what we agreed on at the previous meeting and the subcommittee said, we went and checked all the criteria and we met them, then you would just say, we, the subcommittee certified this. Here's the background letters and here's the agenda item and we move forward. I'm not expecting new criteria at all, it's just, I think there should be a process. And unfortunately, I'm going to vote against this tonight because I believe this is the wrong process. And I'm willing to, you know, in two weeks, vote totally for this thing, I just think I want to see it just clean. I just, so, and so I'm just giving you my, that's my input. And again, it's a, it's a democracy and I can be outvoted, so I'm, I'm okay with that, so.
Yeah. I'll just say if that's the case, I would much rather defer it, I would never want there to be a negative vote on something that's supposed to be a celebration. So I'm more than happy to come back, I guess what I would request, can we put this? It's basically going to be a form that summarizes this document. Can I put it on consent agenda? Next meeting?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah, because I, I mean, I think.
We need to take public comment before.
I'm, I'm still having a discussion right now.
So I'm, I'm coming, because we can always pull it off the consent agenda, so I'm comfortable in terms of the approval. The only question I would ask you is, given it's a celebration, do we want it just to be a consent agenda? Or we, would we rather say it's an honest to God, full-fledged agenda item because we value it, not.
That's why, yes, which is why tonight we didn't, we had, we had an email about whether it was going to go on consent or not. And we said we were going to put it on regular for that precise reason. But given, I was just trying to be expeditious under.
The thing I'm sort of looking for here is a process that we can cookie cutter and repeat over and over again for the next ten years. And so my vote would be that we do it as a regular agenda item. That you, then you guys just do what we just talked about here, that would make me the happiest. If for some reason putting in a consent item next time is important to you, I'm not going to pull it and vote against it the next time. But I just think, let's celebrate, I'm with you, that's what we want this to be, is let's make it a celebration. So let's just make it clean and then everybody can go, yes, this is perfect.
Mary has a quick comment.
Quick comment is that we could put it on the consent agenda for next time and then have the celebration at a, at a later date. Which is what you were planning on doing anyway.
I think what I would like to do at this point is not bring this to a vote. And we will bring it back at the next meeting in a format on the regular agenda.
I'm fine with that. And just for the record, to be clear, we are very fortunate to have one of the most excellent candidates that I could have thought of. And the fact that we're just getting the process aligned, I think is what it is. And I, I'm not concerned however it comes up. It would be great to have, you know, a celebration. So I, I think let's, I would plan on that happening.
Yeah, and to be clear, because we're focused on process, the celebrate, I think a regular agenda item, the nature of that is to discuss the nomination. The true celebration is when the candidate, the nominee is, the award recipient is actually in the room for the award.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And I was speaking figuratively about celebration. It was, let's, let's have a moment of appreciation and consensus around a very unique contribution.
Got it. All right, with that, what do we do if we're not, we can just move on if we're not taking something to a vote? Oh, thank you, yes, thanks for the reminder. Let's see, there is nobody here in the room to raise their hand and I don't see anybody online. Oh, there is one comment, Rita, thank you.
I just want to say Sue Crane is an excellent candidate. And, and it's, looks really nice for our town to honor somebody that has done so much for the town and continues to do so, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. See, moving on, I lost track of my, are we on manager's report?
No, we're at the liaison committee of regional agency.
Thank you.
I have a question though, because the inclusionary housing fund policy was also in the packet and I'm a little confused.
That was, that item was added in error.
Okay.
And so it is, it was removed over the weekend.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I lost track of my.
So we're back on to council liaison committee.
Yes, so.
Can I ask one thing, like it seemed like last time, people put in the written ones, which is great. And I thought the whole goal of the written ones was so we didn't have to discuss them unless there were questions about what got written. So I'm hoping that we don't go and just sort of reread the stuff that was already written. That it's only sort of questions and obviously we'll take public comment on it, but sort of stop there. And I think that was so we can make this whole thing faster.
That was my understanding also.
Good, okay.
Yep. So does, I have no comments because mine are in the packet. Does anybody have any liaison reports they'd like to share information about? No, from Judith, Craig, no, Mary, no, sure.
Wanted to comment that yours look better than ours, but I thought we were supposed to be doing the agenda and itemizing the agenda. But that was the, Jeff suggested, and it, and it's really wonderful because before I go into the meeting, I put the agenda up there and then I annotate it and then I send it before I leave the meeting and it's gone.
Yeah, mine, two out of my three are not meetings, I'm, there's no agenda, really. I'm a liaison to Portola Valley School District where we just talk very free form about issues, so there's no agenda. The other one was because it's only, that's the library JPLA or JPA. They only meet five times a year, I thought I would include some content, especially because it's an area that's, you know, I'm, I'm new to it. And just thought I would highlight some things because it's, I think everybody at this point, I think we're all just do as we do, so I have no problem, I personally have no problem with the formats.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think the goal is what happened in a committee meeting that the council should know about. Like, that's the goal and how you get, whether you do that, and I actually don't think you have to comment on every agenda item. It's only like, these are things the council needs to know about, that's really the critical.
Or the, or would be of interest to the community, yeah.
Yeah, sure, so, so I think here's your phone.
All right, it doesn't sound like we have any commerian liaison updates other than what's in the packet. So with that, oh, public comment on that as well. Again, nobody's in the schoolhouse and I do not see any hands raised, thank you, Melissa for the reminder. So I will close that item and move on to the town manager report, Jeremy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wernikoff and members of the council, I have one item to discuss tonight. And forgive me if I get a little emotional about it. I informed the town council in the last few days that my last day with the town will be on March seventeenth. I I am not one that uh doesn't have words, but it is very difficult to describe what um a meaningful experience working for the town of Portola Valley has been for the last seven years, which in a city manager world is is actually quite a long time. Very few people can say that they had their dream job and I've had my dream job for the last seven years. And I want to thank the council and the council members that I've had the pleasure to work for. The amazing staff of of people who work hard every day, not to earn a bonus, not to earn a little extra cash, but because they care about government and care about the community. Each and every resident that I've had the great fortune to interact with, learn from, and hopefully represent to the best of my abilities and every other partner that that we've had the chance to engage with. The timing is never good for these kinds of things and I certainly am filled with emotion related to uh that aspect of this. But um it's the best decision for my uh my immediate family, my extended family, who I am planning to spend more time with as they uh get older um and um for me in my professional life. Um, and um at the appropriate time, I'll have more to say about what's what's next for me. But I just wanted to say thank you for this incredible opportunity and um I'm going to miss all of you and um I hope I've done something to contribute to the town being a little bit of a better place. So, thank you very much.
I'm more than happy to start.
Well, I was gonna say, so it should be questions, which I'm not sure there's a lot of questions. Then it should be public comment and then we can have a discussion. Just to keep it in the process. It's my thing.
This is I I agree, although this is a unique circumstance here.
Make sure you have public comment. That would be if there is.
Well, okay.
No questions?
I have no questions.
Time we ask about process?
Um, hold, hold on, let's, we're, right now is supposed to be questions. Nobody has any questions. Let's go to public comment. So um is there anybody with their hands raised? Okay, Betsy. Thank you.
I just want to say that I am speechless and Jeremy, I wish you such good luck in in your future, wherever it takes you. I I've heard of the seven-year itch before. I didn't know it was going to catch you. Anyway, um what a shock and and I I just wish you the very best. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Betsy. It means an enormous amount. I appreciate it.
Are there any other hands?
They're coming. Rita?
Jeremy, I just wish you luck in whatever you do in the future and uh and spending more time with your family. Good luck.
Thank you, Rita.
And Jane?
Yes, um Jeremy, thank you so much for being our town manager for seven years. You will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
And Judith Murphy?
Um, hi, I'm surprised, hard to get it together to know exactly what to say here. Um, just want to thank you very much, Jeremy. We haven't connected a lot in the last year since I moved on from being Chair of Conservation, but in all those previous years, I always really valued your availability and uh the little walking meetings we would take to sort of wrestle with issues and try to figure out the best way to handle things. And I I always felt like you listened and um helped whenever you could and I really appreciate it and want to thank you. And uh wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you very much.
Christie Corley?
Yeah, Jeremy, yeah, I'm just shocked too and I wish you the best in whatever you have planned in your life and I thank you for um being with us for seven years and and our town is special and and you were a part of it for seven years, so um I don't know what to say either. Except that, thank you.
Thank you, Christie. I'm sorry to have shocked everyone. That was my intent.
Nan, show stack?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Jeremy, it is a shock. You did shock everyone, I'm afraid. So, uh, yeah, I just wanted to add my my voice to the others and thank you for being the manager, for keeping everything on a more or less even keel. It's it's been really challenging, I know. Uh, it's hard. It's really hard. But I wa- I wish the best for you and for Deborah and and I hope whatever you do uh next will bring you great pleasure.
Thank you. Just so folks know, Nan and my wife um many years ago met each other in a geology program at San Jose State University and spent some time on a geologic field trip for a couple of weeks, I believe. And Nan, I think you were the cook. Um, and my wife speaks very fondly of that adventure that you guys had those many years ago. So your comments mean a lot. I'll let Deb know you said hi.
I think that is the last hand raised. So want to uh close public comment and um move on to the council who would like to start.
I think you were ready to start.
Yeah, you were ready.
We're gonna give you.
Thank you.
Whole position tonight.
Thank you. So so Jeremy, knowing this was coming at the end of the meeting, I was reflecting throughout the meeting tonight how much your incredible institutional knowledge and depth of expertise on so many things related to this town are going to be so missed. I can say for myself personally, you know, when I talk to people about this role and they comment on the public meetings, I say, really, the public meetings are a fraction of the time I spend. I spend so much more time outside of these meetings and that's working with you and people on your team and you guys, you you and as a leader there have um and an expert has been so invaluable to me in terms of getting, you know, just trying to learn all of the nooks and crannies of how all of this works. Um, all of the depth of knowledge you have about policy, all of your extensive connections, your your intuition about things, it goes on and on. And so, you know, I have, it's going to be so odd to me, you know, come later this spring when something comes up and I can't, you know, pick up the phone and give you a call and say, what does this mean? How does that work? You know, it's, I I feel really lucky that I've had two of my four years here overlapping with you um and that I've been able able to learn um working with you and you're just going to be really missed. Um, so, thank you. I think he's, Jeremy, you're on mute.
But you're muted, Jeremy.
That's all right. I'm so bad at this anyway. I don't know. Anybody wants to hear my my ramblings and and I've I'm so bad at hearing these things. So I apologize if I'm acting weird. You know, Sarah, I um uh the last two years working with you has been one of the most delightful professional experiences I have ever had to work with somebody who continuously is bringing creative ideas that challenge staff to think about what we're doing on a regular basis. There may have been days where I looked at you like I don't know what you're talking about. Or um or otherwise, but I um I know that the organization is a better place because of the amount of time that you've spent, at least with me and my staff, talking through um the issues that are 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 important. I can't thank you enough for your guidance over the last few years.
So.
Well, I know, I know, but I'm gonna say it because I I want I want people to understand this, that these relationships run deep, they run strong and they're incredibly meaningful. So and it's the less it's about me, the better anyway. So um, there you go.
Go down to the next person here.
Gonna be hard.
Sure. Um, well, I I was shocked. I'm still a little shocked after a few ye- a few days of the news and I wasn't sure what the rollout would be. So uh in no order of uh particular thought, you you've been with us for seven years and you've seen a lot in those seven years. Between getting us through the pandemic and being creative and guiding staff to think about how to get through it such a tough time, um amplifying the staff and supporting them, educating all of the members of the committee's commissions and I suspect the council, I I'll speak for myself at least, on how to think about new challenges is uh something that's been very valuable and that I had been looking forward to working with you on uh in my new capacity. So um that that will not happen, but what I have experienced is uh the pleasure of seeing somebody who has taken public service very seriously and given a lot to our our town. We're unique. You've been able to appreciate that and and uh navigate that and we really appreciate what you've been able to do in your relatively long time, I guess, uh with us. So wish you the best, wish you and your family much health and much happiness. Uh and we're here when you have time to stop by.
You're on mute again, Jeremy.
So you don't hear me making noises. Um, you're not gonna get rid of me that easy. I'm gonna be around, so um with more, many more trips to LA than I had planned, but um uh thank you. Thank you, Judith.
Okay, my turn. Um. So I've worked with Jeremy since he first got here. Um, yeah, actually, when I said, you should come up to the Highlands and go for a hike. And he was like, the Highlands, I don't even know where that is, but sure, I'll I'll come up to your house and go for a walk. And so I dragged him up through the trail system and, you know, he was game. So I thought, all right, this guy's gonna be okay. Like, maybe he's gonna get Portola Valley. So, yeah, I I really appreciate the last seven years, um the time, the energy, the public service that you've put into the town and making the town a better place. I would say that, you know, now that I've gotten elected to the council, I can't believe you're bailing, but so I I do think that, you know, this next month is going to be super busy with, because you're gonna have to unload seven years worth of information on us in like three weeks. So get get ready.
I am ready. I'm ready for the job.
So and and I just, yeah, I just want to wish you the best um on sort of your next endeavors. So again, you know, thank you for a great seven years.
Thank you, Craig.
Hate to be last in anything, but uh particularly in saying thank you to you, Jeremy. I think you've shown a lot of understanding towards uh towards those who who are who are trying to shine light on on things in a different way and uh you've you've reached out recurrently and offered your time recurrently. I think you've you've done it wonderfully and with a a big heart, a big heart. You're uh, it's it's just a pleasure. It's a pleasure to uh to work with you and like uh like Craig, I'd have to say, you know, I was just starting to get to know you and this is kind of not really fair because you're taking these seven years of experience and uh leaving with it. So I think maybe you do owe us, like, you know, we could do a retainer or some sort of once a month or something. But some way that we can tap back in when the uh when the problems get complicated. And you can keep us uh on the straight and narrow. So I I do really appreciate your leadership and your friendship too, Jeremy.
You.
Still muted. You would think, you would think, uh, Mary, thank you. Um, your comments mean a great deal to me. Um, and um I am not going to disappear. I want to always be a resource to anyone who thinks that I can help. So whether that's formal informal or otherwise, um I can't wait to um continue to have those conversations and in uh however it looks in the future. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think with with that, I think we can say um meeting adjourned.
Oh, man, I was gonna, I was gonna do a little applause for him, but okay.
Oh, no, no, no.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're clapping to an empty, you're clapping to an empty chamber. That's okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Take care.
So now I'll follow up with that.